Bonjour tout le monde. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. We're going to start in one minute. We're going to start in one minute. Thank you. Merci. Bonjour tout le monde. Good morning, everyone. Bienvenue. Just before we pause for a moment of reflection, I wanted to say a few words about Robert Morrison. Bob Morrison was a City of Ottawa councillor representing the former Carlton Ward, which is now effectively College Ward from 1985 to 1988, where he served the neighbourhoods of Redwood, Kensington Park, Belair, Queensway and Britannia in Ottawa's West End. Bob est décédé paisiblement le dimanche 14 mai.
Bob died on May 14, Sunday, during his first meeting as a councillor. He was named as the Physical Environment Committee as well as the Board of the OHCH.
His home for most of his life. An avid golfer, he enjoyed many winters in Florida, so he could play all year round. Bob lived a full and happy life. And on behalf of Ottawa City Council and the people of Ottawa, I wish to extend my sincere condolences to his family as they mourn his loss. The flags at Ben Franklin Place, located in his former ward, will be lowered to half mast on Friday, June 16, the day of his funeral service, to mark his passing. For those who are able, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. Merci. Going to move to the podium now for a special presentation. Good morning once again. Bonjour tout le monde. In recognition of Seniors Month, I would like to invite councillor Jessica Bradley and Clara Ferrer, the general manager of the Community and Social Services Department, to come forward for this presentation. And I am also delighted to welcome Carmen Paquette and other members of the Seniors Roundtable to join us for this presentation. Carmen is also a representative of the Ottawa Senior Pride Network. And I want to thank you and the other members for joining us this morning. Bonjour. June is Seniors Month, and the theme for this year is Working for Seniors. Le mois de juin est désigné par la province de l'Ontario.
June has been declared by the Ontario Month of Seniors Month. This is an honour for me to declare the Seniors Month, recognising all the contribution of the seniors to our city.
... groups in our city. It is expected that by the year 2031, more than one in five residents living in Ottawa will be over the age of 65. And I'm just doing the math. I won't be one of them by that time, but I'll be close. I'll be close. Yeah, eventually, yeah. The City of Ottawa benefits greatly from the many tireless hours of volunteer work and leadership generously donated by our seniors. Ottawa seniors have helped to build our communities throughout many years through active living, shared knowledge and a diversity of experiences. Today, we recognise and celebrate the contributions of seniors across our community and the service providers that continually work to improve the quality of life of seniors in our community. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the seniors here today for everything you do to make Ottawa a wonderful city in which to live, work and raise a family. So I will present a proclamation. And I'll just read the final portion. Par conséquent, je marque Sackliff, maire de la ville d'Ottawa.
Mark Sackliff, Mayor of the City of Ottawa, proclaims June 2023 Senior Months here in Ottawa.
The City of Ottawa do hereby proclaim June 2023 Seniors Month in Ottawa. Thank you. Merci beaucoup. All right, just before we go any further, I wanted to, on behalf of Ottawa City Council, acknowledge that Ottawa is built on the unceded Anishnaabe-Algonquin territory. The peoples of the Anishnaabe-Algonquin Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The City of Ottawa honours the peoples and land of the Anishnaabe-Algonquin Nation and honours all First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples and their valuable past and present contributions to the land. I'll now ask the deputy city clerk to do the roll call, please.
Councillor Lulov.
Je suis présent.
Councillor Dudas.
Ici.
Councillor Hill.
Je suis présent.
Councillor Currie.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councilleur Plant.
Ici.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Troster.
Here.
Councillor Lieber.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor DeRusse. Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor DeRush.
Puis-à.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Lowe.
Here.
Mayor Sackliff.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes from the council meeting of May 24, 2023. Are the minutes carried? Declarations of interest, councillor DeRush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, Steve DeRush, declare a potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest on matters related to the in-camera items. Twenty-three, one-one, twenty-three, one-two, on the agenda for meeting number sixteen of the Ottawa City Council on Wednesday, June 14th. Specifically, twenty-three, one-two, meeting item regarding Zero Mission Bus Project and Enviree Contract with Committee Recommendation that council direct the general manager transit services to finalize negotiations and execute an agreement with Enviree Energy Solutions for the design, procurement and installation of the charging electrical infrastructure, the provision of backup power and an energy management system to support OC transpose conversion to battery electric buses. As this recommendation relates to the Enviree Energy Solutions, given my spouse is an employee with Hydro Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeRush. Are there any other declarations of interest? All right, I'll note the communications noted on the agenda from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and the other communications received under item number eight. There are responses to inquiries as well. In terms of regrets, I'll just note that councillor DeRusse advised us he would be absent because he's having a surgical procedure today. So we certainly wish him well with that. Wanted to extend our best wishes on behalf of all of city council. Motion to introduce reports, councillor Dudas.
Hey, that the report from the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation entitled Ottawa Community Housing Corporation Annual Report and Annual General Meeting of the Shareholder, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report Four, the Joint Planning and Housing Committee and the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report One, Audit Committee Report Two, the Joint Audit Committee and Transit Commission Report One, Community Services Committee Report Three A, Environment and Climate Change Committee Report Four, Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report Five, Light Rail Subcommittee Report Four, Planning and Housing Committee Report Ten, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of May 24, 2023, be received and considered. And that subsection 29-6A, the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider the Auditor General's report entitled Office of the Auditor General 2022 Annual Report as the notice of intent did not occur at the 24th May 2023 council meeting. And that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider Built Heritage Committee Report Six due to the time sensitivity of the item contained in the report.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. Is that carried? All right, item 12 is the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation Annual Report, NAGM. So we'll hold that and come back to it. There's a presentation with that. Item 13 is the Audit Committee's Report Number Two. Item 13.1 is the City of Ottawa Consolidated Financial Statements. Are those approved? Is that carried? Item 13.2 is the Sinking Fund Financial Statements. Is that carried? Item 13.3 is the Office of the Auditor General Report on Fraud and Waste Hotline. Is that carried or received, rather? Is that received? Item 13.4, Office of the Auditor General 2022 Annual Report. Is that received? Item 13.5 is the Office of the Auditor General Semiannual Report on Follow-Up Procedures. Is that received? Item 13.6 is the Office of the Auditor General FTE Budget. Is that approved? Okay, thank you. Item number 14 is the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee. The motion is cash-in-Luitt Parkland fees for 5703 Lager's Way. Is the committee recommendation carried? Item 15 is the Joint Planning and Housing Committee and Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, which has some motions attached to it, so we'll hold that. Item 15.2 is the Provincial Legislation Resource Impact Report on the committee's recommendations. Is that carried?
Descent. A dissent.
One dissent from councillor Hill. Okay. Item 16 is the Built Heritage Committee Report. 16.1, Bill 23, Implementation of Changes to the Ontario Heritage Act. Is that on the committee's recommendation? Is that carried? Item 17 is the Community Services Committee Report Three A, Update to Local Rules Under the Housing Services Act. Is that carried? Item 18.1 is the Update on the Provincial Blue Box Program Transition. Is that carried? Item 18.2. Think we should hold that one. Yeah? Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Item 18.3 is the Council Sponsor Group Solid Waste, Unsolid Waste. Let's hold that for the moment. Item 19 is the Finance and Corporate Service Committee Report Five, 19.1, 2022 Investments Endowment Fund and Other Treasury Activities. Is that carried? 19.2 is the 2023 Tax and Rate Operating and Capital Budget Q1 Status. Is that carried? Item 19.3 is the Capital Adjustments and Closing of Projects, City Tax and Rates Supported. Is that carried? Item 19.4 is the Enterprise Risk Management Program, Approval of Audit Recommended Actions. Is that carried? Item 19.5, 2002 Procurement Year in Review. Is that carried? Carried? Yes. Item 19.6 is the Byward Market Strategic Alignment Initiative. We'll hold that. Item 20 is the Light Rail Subcommittee, 20.1 Trillium Line Extension Project. Is that carried? Item 21 is the Planning and Housing Committee Report. Item 21.1 is the Zoning Bylaw Amendment for One Old Sunset Boulevard. Is that carried? Item 22 is the Bulk Consent Agenda. Is that carried? Okay, and just skipping ahead to... Item 23, the In-Camera Items. So item 23.1 is the Joint Audit Committee and Transit Commission Report. And these items can be carried on consent if everyone is comfortable with that. It's carried? Okay, thank you. And, all right. So let's go back to... Let's go back to item 12, which is the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation Annual Report, an annual general meeting of the shareholder. So I know there is a presentation, and it's going to be introduced by councillor Kavanaugh. And I want to welcome Stephane Girard and his team to our meeting today. Thank you all. Councillor Kavanaugh, whenever you're ready.
Good morning. Bonjour. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge that we are gathered on the traditional and unceded territory of the Algonquin Nation and Anishnaabe Nation. Ottawa Community Housing is all about community, and we value the contributions of the Inuit, Métis and other indigenous people who have made and continue to make, both in shaping and strengthening this community, province and country. Je voudrais dire quelques mots avant de présenter notre...
I would like to say some words before I present you our CEO, Stephane Girard. We will present you our annual report.
... 2018, and I'm proud to have been elected the Chair of the Board this year. It's an honour to be part of OCH's governance team, which is made up of community volunteers, OCH tenants and councillors, and to be here today as Chair. OCH is an organisation focused on service and tenant support, and they work every day to ensure residents have a good place to live, along with an affordable place to call home. For those of you who attended OCH's briefing for councillors back in January, you'll have heard a comprehensive description of the work OCH does. And I think you'll agree, it's a lot. They tackle challenges head-on, no matter how sudden or severe. This includes weather incidents in Ottawa, thinking and think just about the recent ice storm in April, where we had buildings with no power. For these types of incidents, we can often lead to power outages. OCH has emergency management plans in place to effectively operate. Their staff works around the clock to ensure the safety of tenants and provide them with support and services they need during these times. And I witnessed that as they provided coffee, doughnuts and lobbies, all kinds of things to get people through this. They are the largest community and affordable housing landlord in Ottawa. With their determination to help people, helping more people, they are constantly preparing for, planning for and building more affordable housing. City Council declared a housing emergency in 2020, and we know that all types of housing are in short supply to meet existing and emerging demand. Ottawa continue d'avoir besoin de la partenariat.
We still need our partnership. We need this support of our suppliers of housing, and we need the government.
Move the needle on finding homes for the most vulnerable people in our city who are on the social registry, which is currently at 12,000 people. Every day, I see how hard the team at OCH works to figure out how they can do more and be more innovative with what they have. They are part of the solution to help us, city council, meet our 10-year housing and homelessness objectives. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to every person who has put their compassion, their energy and expertise behind trying to build more affordable housing for people in our city who deeply need it. I want to now take the time to introduce from the floor Stephane Girard, President and CEO of OCH. But first, I want to say thank you to the outgoing councillors who were on the board, such as Ralston King, who continues to contribute. And I just want to say a thank you. And also the past president, who we just saw earlier, Mathieu Fleury. Thank you. Merci.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Good morning, your worship, Mayor Sackliff and city council. It is a pleasure to be here this morning to present our 2022 annual report. C'est un honneur d'être ici aujourd'hui pour présenter le travail.
It's an honour today to present you the extraordinary work done by OCHC.
Housing for low and moderate income households. OCH works very closely with multiple city departments and external agencies and services. As you review our annual report, you will observe the tireless efforts of our team to upkeep more than 15,000 homes. Homes that are very important for our residents, and we provide and we are ensuring secure and reasonably priced housing for around 32,000 residents. We deliver value for investments by the city and the taxpayers, providing dedicated management of all operational needs associated with being the largest community housing. Our work supports the work of council and helps people in our city. Year after year, our team provides innovative solutions through an action-oriented approach while prioritising compassion, understanding to best support our tenants. This is why our work at OCH revolves around three pillars: to preserve and maintain our existing homes, to support our tenants and to build more homes. We understand that to fulfil the city's 10-year housing and homelessness plan, we require additional affordable and supportive housing. Through ongoing collaboration with city council and forging a dependable and sustainable partnership with all orders of government, we can expedite the building of affordable housing more effectively. In 2022, Ottawa Community Housing marks its 20th year of service. Despite undergoing various changes, our steadfast dedication to creating a beneficial impact on our communities remains unwavering. Despite the ongoing economic challenges of the past years, we made it a top priority to uphold the upkeep of our properties. For example, in 2022 alone, we completed $65 million in capital repairs across the entire portfolio. As a segment of our population ages and mental health and addiction issues become unfortunately more prevalent, providing adequate support becomes increasingly complex. Our team recognise the needs for collaboration and managing these challenges and is working on a complex care housing strategy aimed at providing the support that tenant needs. I am proud to see that our team is currently working on building over 900 homes. As part of our 10-year development framework, these homes are expected to be completed between 2023 and 2026. Together, we are building more homes that people can afford, and together, we can make a positive impact through collaboration with city council and the housing and homelessness sector. As an accountable organisation, OCH appointed auditors Ursine Young, who provided an unqualified audit opinion that the 22 financial statements were fair, accurate and consistent. OCH remained fiscally responsible and provided tenant services despite challenges like higher inflation, higher interest rates and climate-related weather events that our Chair mentioned earlier. The city's Auditor General also completed an audit of OCH's development and renewal plans. OCH is implementing all recommendations, and we thank them for their work. Our team at Ottawa Community Housing is dedicated to make a difference every day. We are hard-working individuals who truly care about providing the best service possible. We do what needs to be done when challenges arise, and also we support each others, and in that, we all win. Dedicated to continuous improvement and learning, we also started working on our strategic plan refresh last year. And following a comprehensive consultation with many stakeholders, including as many in the room, we are excited to introduce a new plan refresh later this month. Stay tuned for this. With the start of the new term of council, we have had the pleasure to welcome and work with the following new councillors on our Board of Directors. Our board chair, Theresa Kevanna, Glenn Gower, Stephanie Plant, Marty Carr and Mayor Sackliff as an ex-official member. And again, thank you councillor King for your continuous engagement with Ottawa Community Housing. In closing, thank you Mayor Sackliff, city council and city staff for your ongoing commitment to Ottawa to tackling housing and homelessness with us. You can continue to rely on Ottawa Community Housing to deliver innovation and expertise as we preserve homes, support tenants, build more homes in our city. En honnête à la société de logements communautaires d'Ontawa, de son conseil.
On behalf of the society, thank you very much, your partner. Thank you to the personnel and tenant.
Thank you, Theresa. Questions, councillor Brockington? Oh, is councillor King first? Sorry. Councillor King and then councillor Brockington. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, your worship. And I just wanted to briefly recognise and commend the work of Ottawa Community Housing. I wanted to really recognise the work of the Chair of the current board, as well as the CEO, Stephane Girard. I mean, from the incredible challenges that we saw over the last year, my feeling is that Ottawa Community Housing really stepped up to the plate. We saw this with disaster response during the duration of storm, where literally Stephane was with other councillors the day of and the day after, inspecting properties and ensuring the welfare of OCH tenants. We see this with new developments that we're very proud to see emerging in Barhaven, downtown, and especially in Wateridge Village, of course, in my ward. You know, I'm also impressed with the focus on equity, diversity and inclusion at the organisation, that the staff is working with tenants, working across the board with staff and working with other external partners to improve the outcomes of all. And I really do want to also point out in this annual report the focus on the inclusion of complex social services for tenants. I think that's very important. We have to recognise that OCH is simply on paper a landlord, but for tenants, for staff at OCH and for everybody in the city, it's much, much more, and its engagement is quite wide and reaches wide across the city. So I just wanted to really emphasise those facts and once again commend the great work that OCH is doing on behalf of its shareholder, the City of Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Chair and CEO for the presentation today. And I just want to echo the words of my colleague councillor King on his praise and kind words directed to OCH. There are over 2,000 units, OCH units in... There are over 2,000 units, OCH units in River Ward, certainly we're one of the largest in the city. And I do want to say that OCH is a true community partner on so many levels in my ward. I know many of their employees and appreciate their engagement and professionalism and in particular the leadership of the CEO and their senior management team. My question is about housing stock and the age of housing stock, not just in my ward but in many other wards. And as housing inventory ages, it's more expensive to repair and the upkeep costs continue to go up. And OCH has to wrestle with a major dilemma, and that is do we continue to invest in repair and upkeep in these homes? Or do we make tough decisions about taking them down and building obviously new homes? Can you just elaborate really quick, given the age of housing stock across the city, the decisions that you have to take? And are replacement units becoming more dense? So if you take away, let's just say, a row of eight, 10, 12 homes, are you thinking about replacing it with eight, 10, 12 homes? Or are you automatically thinking about greater density? Thank you.
This is a great question councillor. This is very important. This is what we call at Ottawa Community Housing, our portfolio management framework. And out of the portfolio management framework, we're looking at elements about preserving the stock, preserving the assets. We know that in the life cycle of some buildings, you will need to either dispose of the assets or replace. Anytime that we have a replacement strategy and we have demonstrated it with 811 Glassstone, we have ratios, ratios that we're using of three to five to one. So usually, so every time that we will be removing an asset or an apartment or home, we will be replacing it by three or five more. So that's very important because we need more density. We know that as councillor Kavanagh earlier mentioned, we have 12,000 people on the waiting list. We understand also that affordability has stretched to the missing middle and missing middle incomes situation. So preserving the asset, investing, and you may have heard earlier that we, just last year, $65 million went in in the portfolio in terms of retrofit, massive capital repairs, investment in the communities. Having said that, it's not the solution long-term for some of those assets because they would be at the end of the life cycle. And this is where we have plans and plans that are very inclusive of our tenants. Because it's one thing to say that you would need to replace the assets, but this is the home of someone. And you need to be very respectful of the individuals living in those homes to ensure that you have a proper transition plan with them years ahead, not months ahead, and that that is very inclusive of the community as well. So again, this is part of the strategy and this is part of our commitment. And in some occasion, our ratio will go even higher than one to five here.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you councillor Brockington. Conseilier Plant?
Yes, I raised my hands because I wanted you to be able to speak French. I know I shared this story before with you.
In the winter, in schools, and we have a lot of OCH clients, let's underage, let's say, who live in OCH communities. I have the most OCH doors in my ward and 65% of the kids in my ward live below the poverty line. So they're, they live in OCH, they grow up in OCH. And what I really loved hearing from them was when I would ask them where they live, they didn't really necessarily have like a sort of physical address, but they would all say, I live in OCH, I live in OCH. Like it was a community to them, you know, like someone would say, I live in Orleans or I live in Kanata or and I was just really sort of heart warmed by hearing that because as much as we have challenges with OCH and in my word in particular with safety and security and, you know, a lack of housing stock, which is not a secret, these, you know, the next generation really has a warm and community feel to their OCH environment. And I just wanted to stress that because that is super important, especially in Ward 12. Thank you councillor Kavanagh for all your leadership on this file. And, you know, I always join on the Zoom screen. I, it's nice to see you in person. So merci beaucoup, j'apprécie.
Merci conseilier Plant. Councillor Johnson?
Merci beaucoup and very nice to see the two of you today. I commend you very much for all your work. I know you're extremely ambitious when it comes to building new development as well as trying to maintain capital costs. So you're, you're trying to thread that needle and I appreciate it's definitely a tight rope. I was wondering, as you're expanding or as you're trying to grow the number of homes that you provide, how are you imagining your future partnerships with other nonprofit housing corporations that are in other parts of the city? Because certainly in College Ward, for example, we have an APN Housing, a very strong local provider who may also have ambitions to grow. And instead of looking competitively, I'd like to understand how you would work collaboratively. So perhaps you could elaborate on those future ambitions.
Thank you, thank you. And a very important question. This is a question that is at the heart of our strategy in terms of partnership. In fact, we have a consultant who is working for Ottawa Community Housing currently right now, assessing the needs of the different organizations in Ottawa. We understand that not everyone has the same capacity for the ambitions that you could have. And Ottawa Community Housing always make a point to be inclusive. We did the Carrington Community Health Hub with the Carrington Community, in fact, with the Carrington Community Resource Centre. At Makenac, it is done with the Agonquin of Ontario. So it's, and Paul also at 811 Glassstone, that they will be joining in Rochester Heights. So it's very super important to be inclusive in terms of, we don't see competition, what we see is needs. So it's very important to understand that when you have 12,000 people waiting right now, we have to maximize each and every dollars, each and every opportunity, working with all orders of governments. And fortunately, Ottawa Community Housing, and thanks to your support as a leadership and the capacity to really build the confidence for the different lenders, the different organization, the private sector to tag along, to participate, to build more housing. And I invite, in fact, any other providers to tag along and join us.
Really glad to hear that. I know that there are many who are also trying to figure out how to maximize their abilities. And you do have an economy of scale that others cannot access. And so how you might consider leveraging that or lending that capital to others so that everyone can be moving more quickly together in the same direction is a really positive step. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Thank you councillor Johnson. All right, are the report recommendations carried? All right. Thank you, everyone. Merci encore, l'équipe. Thank you, Stephane Giger and team. Thank you, Theresa. Okay, let's move on to item 15.1, which is the Bill 109 implementation phase two. And I understand there are a couple of motions, a technical amendment moved by councillor Leaper and a second motion moved by councillor King. So councillor Leaper?
Thank you, mayor. My understanding is that this motion is with respect to ensuring that planning files can go to agriculture and rural affairs during those times in the summer, particularly I think when it may be challenging to get timelines met. So I'll just read that therefore be it resolved, therefore be it resolved that recommendation 8D be amended to add and any associated official plan amendment as follows. Enable all zoning matters and any associated official plan amendment in any area of the city to have the ability to be considered a planning and housing committee, allowing a rural zoning file to go to planning and housing committee instead of agriculture and rural affairs committee. Should there be a time pressure to meet the provincially imposed deadline, provided that the agriculture and rural affairs committee is given the opportunity to hold a special meeting and is able to meet quorum to consider the matter.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, is the motion carried? All right, councillor King?
Thank you, your worship. By introducing a motion that allows us as councillors to share ward-specific information to applicants during pre-consultation, whereas the report recommends amendments to the pre-consultation bylaw to introduce a multi-tiered pre-consultation process. And whereas the recommended changes aim to facilitate early collaborative and structured opportunities for applicants to receive feedback on their development proposal. And whereas the multi-tiered pre-consultation process introduces three phases to allow the applicant to discuss their ideas, to obtain preliminary feedback, present their refined ideas and any draft materials for comment. And whereas pre-consultation is a process that takes place between applicants and city staff with other participants signing non-disclosure agreements, given the commercial confidentiality of development projects in early stages. And whereas members of council do not participate in the pre-consultation process early on for development application files. And whereas the new provincially mandated timeline shortens the length of time a councillor and greater community involvement can participate in advocating for community desires and specifics about their neighborhood. And whereas this type of input could result in positive feedback and refined ideas and potentially set up the applicant for greater success. Therefore be it resolved that staff within the new multi-tiered pre-consultation phases one and two review the feasibility of providing applicants with ward-specific information such as missing park links and infrastructure improvements to be prepared by the ward councillor's office for the applicant's awareness in preparing an application and report back on the feasibility of amending the process in Q4 of 2023.
Thank you councillor King. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, mayor. I don't have any comments directly on the two motions that were just read in, but I guess it's germane now to talk about the entire motion before us, Bill 109 in particular. And I just want to follow up on a line of questioning I had at committee and since committee with staff. And that is refunding application fees because I want to get more clarity on this matter in particular. As it's spelt out now, what the province is expecting is if a application, whether it be a zoning bylaw amendment application or a site plan application does not meet prescribed timelines, that the application fee will either be partially refunded or fully refunded based on the number of days after a deadline. And there's no dispute, there's no area for a negotiation about whether or not the applicant qualifies for a refund. My questions to staff are, what is the process that we will follow? If an application does not meet those timelines, does the city expect without any type of discussion with the applicant to automatically send them a cheque? Or create a credit for a future application? Or are we going to create a process where the applicant needs to apply for the refund of the fees? Because if we miss it by a day, if the applicant isn't too finicky, why would we be giving away or refunding application fees if it's not a big deal for the applicant? We're not arguing whether or not they've passed the deadline date. I just don't want to have to pay out every single dollar in application fees if the applicant's not asking for it. So I'm seeking additional clarification from staff as to, has this process been determined yet? What's your thinking that goes into this and ultimately what will it look like? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the, is there flexibility? Like if the applicant says, you know, don't worry about the refund, we're close. My understanding is there is not. In terms of the process, in terms of any refunds, I'd ask Emily Davies, who's a project lead, to comment on what that procedure or processing piece would look like.
Thank you for the question. The process on refunds is actually up to a municipality to set up. The refunds are required to the applicant, but the city, any city in all of Ontario can set up their own process for distributing those refunds. So the city does anticipate to set up their own process and it will likely be on a requested basis. That being said, there is risk in that process where we do have to set aside the funds for about a two-year limitation period, allowing that applicant the time to come in and request that refund two years past the deadline.
Okay, I seriously sincerely appreciate that clarity. And I just want to conclude my comments, colleagues, by repeating the main concern I have with this bill, and that is the tight timelines from application submission to when a final decision is expected vis a vis community engagement and consultation. As we heard at committee, the community expects to be consulted and engaged on applications, development applications. And the truncated timelines are, I think severely going to impact the ability for communities to be fully engaged at the level that they expect now. And so that may require our own offices to be more creative in how we engage at the very beginning of a process. I am not opposed to this provincial bill. I do believe that the amount of time that applications take needs to be shortened. But I want to on the record state my concern again, and that is what I believe ultimately will happen is less engagement, less ability for the public to be engaged on these applications. Some are fairly straightforward and don't result in a lot of comments from the community. Others are much more engaged and obviously those are the ones that I'm most concerned about. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you councillor Brockington. Councillor Curry?
Just on that very last note there by councillor Brockington, I think what councillor King is trying to do with his motion here is to solve a lot of that. And I would just say, at first I wanted just to make a comment in support of the amendment by councillor King because what one developer has done in Kanata, the very large development that's coming up at Terry Fox and March Road, is that developer has met with every single community association already, way in advance of this process. Each of the presidents and has laid out all of their thinking and then asked for the thoughts of the community association and the Kanata Green Space Protection Coalition. So when I looked at that process, I thought, that's an excellent idea, like other developers have not done that. And so when I look at what councillor King has in his motion, I think that could get at that. So my, really my only question to staff is, do you see any issue with this? I don't know if this is to Tim Mark or what, in terms of what the province has said. Because when I've seen the little trial run of this, I love it.
Mr. Mayor, there, I have no doubt that consultation during the pre-consultation process with the ward council's office can be built in. How far it can go with respect to some of the items that are identified in councillor King's motion? I think that needs further review, but it's certainly worthy of examination.
Yeah, no, I think it's just another helpful piece of information to provide to, potentially provide to proponents. As Mr. Mark indicated, there are limits in terms of, you know, what we can legally request, you know, off-site works and that type of thing. But I think it's subject to those parameters and some further development, I think it would be a helpful piece. And as you note, a number of the developers do a lot of that front-end consultation work with the communities in advance of submitting.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm supportive of the entire recommendation by staff and councillor King's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Curry. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned that this report overemphasizes the need to increase staff capacity and bureaucracy while not addressing the fundamental issue of modernizing our policies and procedures to meet the dire housing needs of our municipality. Bill 109 was designed by our provincial colleagues to push municipalities to make it easier to build homes. It comes hand in hand with the city's own commitment to build 151,000 homes by 2031. I understand the risks that these accelerated timelines create regarding the city's ability to collect application fees if unable to comply with abbreviated site plan controls and zoning bylaw amendments. But the province is asking us to be agile and adaptive. Council needs to understand what actions are being taken by staff to streamline the planning business processes to reduce red tape and improve outdated processes. The province is calling on municipalities to be more efficient, especially when our existing processes dictate minutia like shading requirements or by setting counterproductive limitations like outdated height maximums in downtown and along transit corridors. And staff need to align the city's zoning bylaw with official planning, with the official plan policies. If we want to improve the health of our downtown, it needs vertical residential growth, both onsite and at LRT and transit stations. As a suburban councillor, my ward is under immense pressure to grow. I understand that and I support it as long as we're doing it in a balanced manner such that infrastructure, parks, recreation facilities, libraries, and amenities are growing in proportion. Losing our delegated authority clipped our wings to influence local development and the province did it because for years we were underperforming. I don't want to see the province introduce a more harsh policy that further reduces the influence of local government. We need to engage the spirit of Bill 109, not just the letter of it. We need to accept the discomfort of taking some risk and giving up some control. I'm concerned that we could both fail in our housing objective or that we'll become the target of more restrictive provincial housing policies again in the future or see a dramatic increase in use of MZOs. Furthermore, we have an obligation to our Ottawa citizens. Furthermore, we have an obligation to our Ottawa citizens who are crying out for real action. The next generations are being costed out of this city, and that's not good for our economy, nor is it good for the environment. I committed to making life more affordable in this city, and housing prices have doubled in the last five years. Average rent is twenty one hundred bucks a month or more. Our waiting list for rent geared to income is about thirteen thousand long. This is both unaffordable and unsustainable, and we owe it to our citizens to get this under control. We may we we may not have made this mess, but we have to clean it up. This report avoids the uncomfortable subject of our housing pledge. Simply put, we're not on track, and this report with this response does not advance our housing needs despite the provincial legislation aiming to have this very effect. To me, it's a simple question. Are we improving affordability for the residents of Ottawa? Growing government does not lead to agility. I'm committed to improving affordability, and I look forward to accelerating our discussions on this important issue going forward. Thank you, and I'll be dissenting from this motion.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Troster.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you so much for staff who worked so hard on on reacting quickly to legislation that was imposed on the city. To be clear, I'm profoundly unconvinced that this will make a material difference when it comes to housing affordability. I don't have a problem with speeding up processes, and I know through our zoning bylaw review at Planning and Housing Committee, we will be taking a look at all of the different zoning options to increase density in our city. But there's a lot in this legislation being imposed on us that design limits community feedback. Just to be clear, I asked this question at Planning and Housing Committee, but I wanted to ask in front of full council. So am I correct in assuming that because of the timelines, which are much tighter with this legislation, I was told that city staff would no longer be able to attend development consultations run through councillors' offices? Is this correct?
Chair, as the proposal stands today, that is correct, but we did accept the direction to look at the options or how we can better support councillors in in coming forward with support at community consultation meetings. So that's something that we are looking to develop and come back, I think, in Q three or Q four, as the direction was outlined at committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, I come from a ward with an enormous amount of development, an enormous number of very, very large developments. And even though I agree we should be speeding up housing approvals, when it comes to working with the neighborhood, we get a better design when we work with the community. So just to be clear, in case the people around this table didn't hear it, so I I put a direction to council, to staff, to ask them to come back to us to let us know what additional resources they would need in order to be able to have someone available for community consultations when needed. Again, this wouldn't be with every development, but it would certainly be with the ones that that require that that extra due diligence. Yeah, and I would welcome the opportunity to work with staff further on best practices for landmark buildings. These are buildings that are twenty seven floor stories high. They're often the tallest building in the neighborhood, and it takes a lot to get the community on side. We're asking a lot of people, we're asking them to accept change in their neighborhood, and that's change that I'm determined to fight for because we do need to build so many more homes. But we need to bring the community along with us, and they need to be fully informed and fully engaged. Otherwise, we won't have the buy-in that we need to make the broader zoning changes. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all the work staff did on this.
Thank you, councillor Troster. So we'll vote on the on the King motion seconded by councillor Leaper. Is that carried? One dissent, councillor Hill. Okay, and then the motion itself as amended, is that carried? Are you dissenting again? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's take a deep breath and move to item eighteen point two on the agenda. The curbside waste diversion policy. Okay, here we go. We will start with a referral motion from councillor Kelly, which is a procedural motion, so we'll deal with it first. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to skip the first whereas because it takes too much time and it's not all that relevant. So whereas the recommended tag and bag limits are complicated, inequitable and punitive for segments of the population because of the exemptions and caveats that would be required to run a citywide program of this nature. And whereas twenty percent of the waste comes from multi residential units, which are not included in the recommended curbside waste diversion policy. And whereas in two thousand and nineteen, the city permitted plastics to be added to the green bin program, the most significant amendment to the policy in seven years. Because of concerns about the cleanliness of the bins and diversion was only increased by three percent as a result. Whereas city staff have identified that the majority of diverted waste should be diverted through the green bin program. And whereas the city has not engaged in a large scale comprehensive education campaign since the introduction of the green bin program in two thousand and ten. Whereas the recommended partial pay as you throw program involves significant changes and alterations to solid waste planning for large diverse metropolitan area. And this program is being presented in Q two two thousand and twenty three, while the solid waste master plan is considered by city council in Q four two thousand and twenty three. Therefore, be it resolved that the city refer the curbside waste diversion policy report back to staff and direct staff to undertake the following activities prior to Q four two thousand and twenty three and include associated findings, options and recommendations in a revised report to be considered by the committee and council the same meeting as the solid waste master plan. Number one, conduct and provide the results of further public consultation of any proposed amendments to the residential curbside collection policy that would include tag and bag limits, including the limits proposed in the original staff report. Number two, continue to investigate opportunities to enhance waste diversion in multi residential properties. As per the council approved multi residential waste diversion strategy as part of the solid waste master plan. Number three, develop recommendations for a comprehensive education campaign about the need for further diversion, emphasizing the cost of inaction and the important role we all play in reducing waste and extending the life of our municipal landfill to ensure that residents have the knowledge and the tools to divert waste, including the appropriate bins. And number four, investigate and provide options for educational opportunities to encourage compliance with waste diversion and bring forward proposed mechanisms to move forward, move from encouragement to enforcement by two thousand and twenty six. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge that I'm late to the party on this one, for sure. I admit that. I don't like last minute motions. And sorry, can I speak to the motion now? And I just, I know that there's been some great work done and and under your leadership, Mary, you facilitated conversation. People have come to a compromise. I simply don't agree with it and wanted to propose a solution rather than come here today and oppose the solutions that had been presented. So the other thing I want to make clear is that I was an early adopter of the green bin program. I'm a huge supporter of it. It pains me to put organics in the garbage, which I do in the green bin because we don't have a green bin option in there, I don't think. But I did this because I care and I truly want to be part of the solution and understand that as a resident, I play an important role in diverting waste. And I think what my motion seeks to do is help foster a climate in which all residents want to be part of the solution and buy into diversion programs because it's the right thing to do for our city now, as well as future generations, not because they're forced to conform to a particular limit or buy tags. I firmly believe the approach outlined in my motion is more equitable in its application than tags or a bag limit and does not treat the family of eight the same as the family of two. I believe that a firm limit will ensure that the concerns about illegal dumping are realized, which will certainly affect world wars like mine. In November two thousand and twenty one, the city of Ottawa published the findings of its survey on curb curbside waste diversion, and on page forty six of the report on that survey findings shows the top risk identified by eighty seven percent of respondents was illegal dumping. A firm limit with no option for additional items, it simply ignores those concerns. This report also admits in section six, page twenty five, that firm item limits, and I quote, could create difficulties for some residents to deal with excess garbage that cannot be avoided, donated for use or diverted. So I posed the question to my colleagues once again. What will people do with the fourth item, bag or bin? On page twenty three of that same report in section five point six, it states many residents stress the need to better educate residents on how to reduce further reduce and further divert waste. I couldn't agree more. And I don't recall a time since the green bin program was introduced where a large scale and comprehensive education campaign has been undertaken. I came across a pamphlet in my office. I had one in my office that described what went in the green bin. I went over to our client service center, which I'll say is open one day a week. Couldn't find anything over there. I decided to do Google Waste Collection in Ottawa. It took me four specific clicks to get through to the Waste Explorer. And if you were a resident that didn't know what the Waste Explorer was, it would take time to finish. My apologies, Mayor. I'll wrap up. I think we're putting the cart before the horse by implementing sweeping changes in advance of the master plan being presented for consideration in Q four. What is the harm in deferring this until further review as the master plan is presented? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Anyone else? We can just move right to a vote on the referral motion. Okay, so let's do a recorded vote on the referral motion then, please.
Councillor Carr.
No.
Councillor Curry.
No.
Councillor Bradley.
No.
Councillor DeRusse. Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor King.
No.
Councillor Lowe.
It's me, no.
Councillor Johnson.
No.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No.
Councillor Luloff.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
No.
Conseilleur Plante.
Oui.
Councillor Troster.
No.
Councillor Divine.
No.
Councillor Kits.
No.
Councillor Hill.
No.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Leeper.
No.
Councillor Menard.
I wanted to speak to this and say that I appreciated your concerns. I didn't get a chance to speak. Sorry, Mayor, but also, no, thank you.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Brown.
No.
Sir DeRush.
Oh.
Mayor Sekov.
No.
Four yeas, twenty nays.
Thank you. So we have two motions that that are about how we should move forward from here. So I'm gonna from a procedural point of view, I'm going to suggest that we debate both of them at the same time. So there is councillor Divine's motion seconded by councillor Leeper and councillor Brown's motion seconded by councillor Carr. So I'll I'll suggest we debate both of those at the same time, and then we will vote first on councillor Divine's motion, and if it if it if it passed, councillor Brown's motion would be redundant. If it doesn't pass, we would vote on councillor Brown's motion. And I understand there's a proposed amendment to the councillor Brown motion as well, which we'll deal with at that time. So councillor Divine, if you'd like to introduce your motion, and then councillor Brown can introduce his.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read the motion. I think everyone is familiar with the the two options now before us. And I want to start by by thanking the mayor and councillors Carr, Brown and Menard for working collaboratively on the compromise motion we have before us today, which my motion presents an alternative to. And, Mr. Mayor, as you have done before, I am grateful for the openness that you show when you respect my decision to follow a different path. Thank you for that. And as for my motion, even though it has my name on it, and thank you to my secondary councillor Leeper for putting his name on it, I am not the originator. The mayor and councillor Carr took the policy recommendation that came from staff, and they made it simpler to implement and therefore better. And the idea behind their motion, and most importantly, the potential outcomes of that motion still exist, and it's those potential outcomes that I am focused on. I didn't originate the idea, but I will proudly and humbly uphold it. Because I believe that the potential outcomes of this motion are greater than the compromise motion. I believe it's the better policy. For seventy four percent of our residents, it will have little impact. For the other twenty six percent, it will do more to incentivize change. It will get us closer to our stated goal of sending less waste to landfill. And in light of the ongoing climate emergency, it is the bolder decision which makes it the tougher decision. I know that the compromise motion is seen as a step in the right direction. In my opinion, what I'm reproposing in my motion is a step in the right direction and not even a huge step. According to the OECD, the Organization of Economic Cooperation and Development, Canada is among the worst countries when it comes to managing household waste. And among Canadian cities, Ottawa is by no means leading the pack. My concern with the compromise motion, my concern with a three bag limit is that rather than taking a step in the right direction, we're going to have stagnation. Now, I know that I could have simply allowed the compromise motion to pass without being debated, and I know that I'm going to take a lot of heat for this, but I also know that there are many people around this table. There are many people across the city, and there are many people in my ward who share my belief that this is the better policy. So here's something I'm going to read from an email from a Ward nine resident. Staff have put a lot of work into developing data-driven policy options. Residents participated in the consultations, and it is disheartening when loud and unhappy voices start inspiring eleventh hour changes to what was presented to us in consultation. Why have a consultation process? Why have staff analysis? This is a controversial issue, and certainly some people are going to be loud about the pain of change, but all the more reason to respect what the staff analysis is indicating. And it is my belief that those people deserve to have their voice represented here where we debate competing ideas in public, especially when the debate at committee led to stalemate. A member of my team, Alexandra, she said something to me yesterday that that hit me. She heard me talking to many of my colleagues on the phone, colleagues who, if circumstances were different, might support this. She could hear where the conversation was going. She could hear that the support for this motion was hesitant. And to her, as a twenty six year old with her life in front of her, this choice is a no brainer. Because in the grand scheme of all the decisions that governments have to make when it comes to climate action, this decision is small. And I asked her how she felt about how this was proceeding based on how we were managing this small decision. She said that she's resigned herself to the belief that she and her future children are doomed. I think the reason that she feels that resignation is not because of the growing number of fires that she might see outside, but because inside here, she feels as if we did not hear the fire alarm. So if this is the best environmental policy, and if supporting the best policy will best secure all of our futures, then I hope that you join me in supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Divine. So I'll ask councillor Brown now to introduce the other motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read in the whole thing so residents at home know what we're discussing. Whereas in addition to a variety of options being considered to reduce waste and increase waste diversion, staff are recommending a curbside waste diversion policy. And whereas the transition to the provincial blue box program under individual producer responsibility comes into effect on July first, two thousand and twenty three, meaning that every item diverted through the city's black and blue boxes results in cost savings as the city will no longer be responsible for covering the costs of those programs. And whereas the more waste we send to landfill, the more it costs us for processing waste, and the more quickly our landfill reaches capacity and residents would be able to save money by diverting more through organics and recycling programs already available. And whereas increased diversion is an essential consideration when considering and obtaining provincial approval for future waste management processes such as waste to energy. And whereas though this waste trend, sorry, through this waste transition, it is important to consider the feedback from residents when managing curbside waste set out. Therefore, be it resolved that council approve amended recommendation one A in the curbside waste diversion policy report to read, a program with a biweekly firm limit of three garbage items set out every two weeks, no later than the end of Q two two thousand and twenty four. And be it further resolved that the new three garbage item program roll out a comprehensive implementation and communication plan to commence as soon as possible and in advance of the proposed implementation date in the original staff report. And be it further resolved that staff be directed to develop a process through implementation planning to accommodate agricultural properties receiving curbside collection services to be permitted to dispose of additional unavoidable farm waste so long as they are actively participating in waste diversion programs as outlined in the solid waste management bylaw. And that staff report back to council on the recommended process as part of the implementation and readiness plan update to council as early as possible. And be it further resolved that staff explore the feasibility of leveraging the existing yellow bag program to permit residential properties receiving curbside collection who require flexibility to a firm three item limit to purchase and set out additional bags. And be it further resolved that authority be delegated to the general manager of the Public Works Department. And be it further resolved that authority be delegated to the general manager of the Public Works Department to make the related amendments to the solid waste management bylaw twenty twelve dash three seventy to implement the changes to the curbside collection policy as outlined in this motion. And be it further resolved that staff be directed to undertake an independent third-party review of the data used by solid waste services to support the curbside waste diversion policy, including, but not limited to, waste volume projections, landfill waste capacity, waste diversion projections, and proposed financial projections, and report back to council in the fall, and that the third-party review also include a verification of the data currently in development to inform the development of the draft solid waste master plan. And that staff provide ongoing reporting on diversion efforts, including green, blue, and black bin waste composition and effectiveness of diversion through these programs once the bag limit is implemented. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I want to start by thanking Counselor Carr, because this truly is a one-hundred percent collaborative effort. I also want to thank the mayor and his team for bringing counselors back around the table after last Monday's environment committee meeting. I think we did exactly what residents expected us to do. Come back together around a table and hammer out a compromise that the majority of counselors around this table and residents could live with. I also want to thank the majority of our colleagues sitting around this table. I hope you see your comments to the mayor's office, Counselor Carr and I reflected in this motion. This is a one-hundred percent team effort, and I hope that's not lost on those of us sitting here today. The collaboration that's taken place, even though we have, uh, other options that have been tabled today, has been tremendous. I also think that this plan is the most modest approach we can take that acknowledges we have to do better with our diversion efforts, but respects residents, particularly large family and multi-generational family households who might struggle with a smaller firm limit. We're also asking staff to leverage the existing yellow bag program to see if we can expand that to residential uses to help those families that might need a little bit of extra flexibility, and I will ask staff to flesh out that program for us today and talk about some of the options that might exist. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I can't thank everyone around the table. I'm almost out of time, so I, I do appreciate our colleagues', uh, time and attention. I do have more to say, but I want to thank everyone from around the table, certainly staff who've worked hard on this item. I look forward to our colleagues' questions, and I know Counselor Carr and I, uh, are excited to see the backside of this so we can continue on with the business of the city. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. So again, we'll have debate and discussion on both motions. Um, Conseilleur Plante?
Euh oui, Conseil Divine, est-ce que c'est la motion dont vous avez présentée?
Is that the motion that, the motion that you presented today? Is that the one that Counselor Carr presented in committee? I was not there. Is it the same one or pretty similar to it?
In terms of the be it resolves? Yes, it is essentially the same. Um, I, I changed the wherethes just to provide some different context. Um, I'll be honest, I removed the, uh, the part about the first leaving of it, leaving it an extra bag uh, at the end of December, at the beginning of January, uh, not because I'm anti-Christmas, just, um, I thought it was the most fair and bold thing to do, but essentially the be it resolves are, 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 are the same. It's uh, two bags with no tags, uh, plus fifteen bags being sent out. It's, it's essentially the same.
Okay, merci.
Merci Conseilleur Plante.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Plante. Conseilleur Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I want to take this opportunity to thank staff for all the work on this report and the years that has, it has led up to. Um, you are the experts. You've spent a lot of time doing this, and I appreciate the effort, and I don't want that to be lost in this discussion. Um, I will be supporting the Divine motion. I recognize this is a very difficult discussion, and for some, it's even an inconvenience. But I remember the backlash against the change from weekly to every other week garbage pickup. But it got through. I heard about it even when I campaigned in two thousand and eighteen, which was years after. So I understand that sometimes it's difficult for adjustment. But this is consistent to support the two-bag-with-no-taggs motion from Counselor Divine that's very similar to the one that, uh, was on a tie vote by Counselor Carr. Roughly seventy-five percent of residents are already doing this. We need to do this in conjunction with the fast-tracking of our policies for parks and recycling. This is very, very important, and I've emphasized this at committee. Fifty-eight percent of contacts set out for garbage collection could be diverted to either compost or recycling. We have to work to do this to meet the diversion goals, and this policy will help. I appreciate the new provincial blue box program where producers will be taking responsibility for collecting and processing recyclable materials from eligible sources. We've asked producers to step up and take responsibility for the packaging of their goods. That's the right thing to do. And now we are asking those who are not meeting those diversion goals to step up as well. The new blue box program is important, and it means every item that is sent to the landfill instead of to the recycling will be costing us more money and to take up crucial space in our landfill. So don't forget that connection, and we will have no chance to be recycled, to have that material reused. As a city, we must work towards new provincially legislated mandates for composting. No compost to the landfill by twenty thirty. I've heard concerns about multi-residential buildings. Um, those are six or more units, and this has to be examined, and I know OCH is making a huge effort on this, just as an aside. No one should feel that they are targeted. The discussion for our waste policy is happening at all levels and always, including the long-term look at landfill. We must know that a new landfill or some kind of waste-to-energy long-term plan will cost three hundred to four hundred and fifty million dollars. Diverting recycling and composting is crucial for the environment. The longer our landfill lasts, the better for everyone. Residents in Ottawa are currently paying the lowest fees for garbage collection, a hundred and eighty dollars per year, when Edmonton pays five hundred. In order to continue to enjoy that, we need to continue to divert compost and recycle. The discussion of waste is an important one, and it's also a very difficult conversation to have. The councils are elected to make tough decisions. I want to be able to say to my grandkids, who I saw on Saturday and talked about it with them, about, um, what they thought of it. They didn't see it was a big deal. We could keep our garbage low and keep our recycling high. They're my examples out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Counselor Menard?
Thank you, uh, very much, Mayor, and thanks to everyone for, uh, the ongoing debate in our city around this issue. As I said previously, it, it touches every single person in our city, so these debates, uh, and certainly get heated, and everybody has an opinion on the way waste should be handled. Every single person has an opinion on that. I wanted to first just start off by thanking our incredible staff team for all the work that they've done. Um, Shelley, Andrea, Nicole, Mary, Lindsay, Rachel, uh, Elizabeth, Laura, and LA, and I know there's many others too that have worked on this issue. Um, this is an incredible staff team that, that has done a lot of engagement, a lot of work to get to where we are today, and of course, there's a lot more to come. This is one of many decisions that are coming on the solid waste master plan, uh, and a lot of positives. I think, uh, there is so much good happening right now in our city that we need to remember. We have one of the lowest waste charges on our tax bills in North America, thanks to the good work of our staff team. To those asking to generate energy from our waste, I think, well, we generate energy right now from our waste streams at both Trail Road and ROPAC. The sewage treatment process turns waste into biogas to power the plant using onsite generators. Generators at a centralized plant at the landfill started turning excess gases into power to sell back into the electricity grid. Last term at council, the decision was made to make the green bin mandatory in all multi-residential buildings. New buildings have that as mandatory right now, and older buildings are being phased in, and we need to do that as soon as possible. The work that's been done by our staff team on producer pay should start to see packaging content improve, and that's been extensive work to transition to this new model, which starts July first in our city. Residents won't see a change when that happens. We'll have a three-year phase-in period, um, when that occurs. I think in the future, there is so much that's being thrown out at the curb that's usable, and that's an issue. I, I see residents writing to me all the time. You know, it's, it's not just this incineration piece. We're wasting exceptionally valuable resources that are going to landfill, beautiful dressers, bikes, dehumidifiers, things that do not belong in landfills. You go along the way and you see all these items that could be reused or sold that are going to landfill. So we need a full-scale binner program to reuse these items, even perhaps a public municipal reuse store with valuable items reused from the curb. Mattresses, bulky items. We need to solve for these as other cities have done. There's a path forward here, and it's a lot more than just this current debate. On this debate, um, I'm gonna be voting for both motions, and I've, I've let people know that, that I support the original, um, staff recommendation with the compromise that was there. And if that can't pass, then I support the three-bag limit, limit as some minor progress. I think when you look at the two, there's a stark difference. I, a lot of my colleagues along the way talked about larger families being a concern, uh, the illegal dumping being a concern, the common pads being a concern, the costs, and, um, the actual diversion rate. I think with the three-bag limit, unfortunately, those things aren't as improved as that other tag system. I think we're gonna see it being worse than the tag system would be, but there's this been this aversion to tags that I know is not there, so uh, that, that, that I think, um, is, is understandable, because these are hard decisions. They're very difficult decisions. So Mayor, I do have a direction, uh, that I did want to introduce. Did you want me to introduce that now as part of this debate, or, uh, when would you like that?
We can, we can do that, uh, after we've moved through these motions.
Okay, so I'll do it before the votes happen, and, uh, just wanted to say thank you again to our, to our staff team, the committee, uh, the, the committee in particular, uh, who I know cares deeply about our city and, and how we move forward, and these are continued to be tough decisions, and I think we need to be brave in the face of the fact that not everyone's gonna like these decisions. There's always gonna be people on either sides, and we need to do what's right for our city first and foremost. So, um, thanks, Mayor, and, um, appreciate all the discussion on the, these items.
Thank you, Counselor Menard. Uh, I was gonna, uh, ask you to introduce your direction after we voted on a few of these motions, if that's okay with you.
Fair enough.
So we can, we'll, we'll get to it later.
Sounds good.
Yep. Uh, all right. Thank you, Counselor Menard. Counselor Troster?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'll tell you, I'm of two minds. On one hand, I think it's remarkable to see an urban and a rural councillor work so well together. I think we're really building bridges on this council. I think it speaks to Counselor Carr and Counselor Brown, and also Counselor Menard and the mayor, um, of us wanting to have a decision uh, that is supported very strongly, if not unanimously. But I think sometimes in trying to compromise with each other, uh, we miss the opportunity to be uncompromising when it comes to the environment. Uh, I'm, I don't want to let perfect be the enemy of good, so I am prepared to vote for the compromise motion, but I am also planning to vote for, for, um, Counselor Divine's motion, because I think we underestimate people's capacity to adapt to change. I really do. Every other major city has some sort of a tag system. I anticipate that if we adopted it, it would lead to a lot of casework, and then that would eventually die down. People will get used to it. Um, I don't really see the point in having a three-bag limit when seventy-five percent of, of the public in Ottawa is already putting out two bags or less. Uh, I'm not sure how the compromise really gets us towards our waste diversion goals, but I am prepared to go with the uh, recommendation of members of the Environment Committee who seem to be supporting this compromise. I, I think we need to be brave in the face of climate disaster. Uh, we're in the middle of discuss, we've been discussing this for the last couple of weeks at a time when we had horrendous smoky air from forest fires. Um, I, I really dread the decision that we're eventually gonna have to make about where to put a new landfill or if we incinerate. Who wants a trash incinerator right beside their house? These are very, very difficult decisions. As Counselor Kavanaugh mentioned, we already pay in Ottawa the lowest fees for garbage. And for those who say that it would punish larger families to have, uh, bag tags, look, if you have a larger family, you pay more for bus tickets, you pay more for swimming lessons. There is a cost to having more people in your household. I think there's ways that we could have mitigated that. So, um, I really want to thank, uh, Counselor Carr, and Counselor Brown, and the mayor, and Counselor Menard, and Counselor Divine. I think this is a really useful discussion. So I prefer the first option. But I know that was deadlocked at committee, and I imagine it'll be deadlocked at council too. Um, so I'm yes to both motions, but I do wish that collectively, um, we could be a bit braver when it comes to the urgency of environmental action. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Troster. Uh, Counselor Kelly?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And, uh, I think, so first of all, I'm, I'm not gonna support either of these motions, because I don't think either of them are the the right path forward for our city. And I, I think what bothers me most about this debate is that as a council, we seem to have decided that we have two options. We got a report from staff several weeks ago with some recommendations, and then we're given a matter of weeks to flesh out what I think are really complicated content. And to be honest, I think many of my colleagues have decided to support this limit because supporting tags is politically unpopular. And, uh, and I think that that has left us with very few options to explore as a city, and, uh, and it makes me sad that, uh, that we can't continue this conversation and, uh, create better policies for the city that work for the greatest number of constituents. Um, I do have a couple of questions for staff in terms of the three-bag limit, uh, proposal. Do we currently have a limit on the number of items that we can place at the curb?
For you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that is correct, Counselor. The, the current item limit is six items.
Okay. And can you explain how that is enforced?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as it exists today, that limit is not actively enforced.
And would that be the same plan for a three-bag limit, or is there also a additional plan for further enforcement as part of the three-bag plan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the intent would be as per staff's original recommendation that we would be coming back to, to members of council with um, a, an evidence-based enforcement strategy, but the intent in order for the policy to be effective, that industry best practice is to have an enforced bag limit.
And do you think if we enforce the current six-bag limit, that that would have had an appreciable difference on how much waste goes to our landfill?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in terms of what we're seeing, I'll just bring us back to that set-out study data. Um, and as it exists today, we have, um, very close to a hundred percent of residents that are already, um, setting out at or below that limit. Um, so it's certainly, it may have had, um, a marginal impact, but I would say not as significantly, just given where residents are today.
Okay. And my final question is, did the, as part of the solid waste master plan, have you been exploring um, options in terms of enforcing a program where organics are not allowed in the garbage?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As it exists today, under the solid waste bylaw, um, there is a provision for mandated requirement for source separation, so that, that includes recyclables as well as, as, um, as organics. So it's a provision that exists today.
So it already exists?
That's correct.
Is that enforced?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is not currently enforced. Um, and one of, as we were developing the, the policy recommendations as part of this project, um, one of the options that was considered is the introduction of a clear bag program, which would allow a much, it would allow it to be much more easily enforced.
Okay. Thank you very much for your answers to the questions, and, uh, for me, it, it, that's an indication that we haven't done all we can as a city with the current programs that we have in place to encourage people to divert waste. And, uh, I think we should do a lot more of that before moving on with the programs that are being proposed here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Counselor Tierney?
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a couple of quick questions for staff. I do want to thank you. I know there was quite a bit of work put into this. Um, in the, uh, the, uh, Brown-Carr motion, I, it makes mention of our current existing yellow bag program that already exists. It's up and running. Is it something you're gonna investigate on how we can leverage that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct, Counselor.
That's wonderful. And secondly, I know, uh, there's a lot of discussion around, I keep hearing the word "bag", but i- is it not correct that I could put out three containers, uh, with, I could throw three bags in each container and weighing ninety-nine pounds? Ninety-nine pounds? That's quite a bit of weight. Uh, is that not true as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. Three, three items. So it's not, or sorry, as it exists today, six items. Under the proposal, three items. So that would be one container up to a hundred and forty liters, thirty-three pounds max per each container.
Wonderful. So, uh, you know, it, it's a bit of a mugs game, uh, because it's almost lose-lose for us regardless. We're still receiving emails that, because there's two things we do really well. I've already said this a few times, is snow removal and garbage. And when you touch any of those things that we actually do really well, uh, it gets our residents really worked up. Um, you know, the, the, the three bags, and, and I was speaking with the mayor. You know, the, the, the three bags and and I was speaking with the mayor about making some simple graphics to explain to people, my office is listening now, we're. Making those nice little pictographs, you know, two cans and I won't say a couch, Mr. Mayor, but like a broken chair. And then you can pay for another yellow bag. That's kind of the vision and the simple explanations to people at the same time. Education to keep those diversion rates going in a much better direction. I also, I also like the fact the yellow bag program doesn't have a requirement for higher taxes. To be able to pay for the administration, all for the two years extra that we get out of it. I do agree with with councillor Kelly. I wish we had our full buffet in front of us right now. Because I also see a big problem with the multi-residentials and we talked about that extensively during the meeting about. There's a thousand pads, a thousand pads that are just full of tires, they're full of toilet seats that I showed in the last. Last demonstration at the Environment Committee and I see it every day and it angers me that we haven't done that yet. But that report's going to come back and I think that's where it's really going to make some big changes in the way of diversion. We do, you know, we do want to look at that long term vision. We can't keep building garbage mountains. At least having the data in front of us that waste energy, kind of like Quebec City, how they're powering hospitals or Vancouver, that's been incineration for a while. I think we still have quite a ways to go and I have heard there's failures of previous councils for not being bolder and I remember I was there. With Marie McCray when we went to biweekly and garbage bags were being left on my lawn. And I think that really scared people for a while. Yeah, true story. And it scared people for a while to do anything because this is a very hot topic. You know what? Inner urban colleagues, they they fully admit as well, this really hits the outer urban, the suburban and the rural areas in this tranche. But when we get to multi-residential and more things. Have more play in their areas as well. So for all those reasons, I want to thank all the movers of motions. I want to thank the staff and I want to thank specifically councillor Brown and councillor Carr. For getting together, putting our heads together and finding a reasonable solution to this. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tierney, councillor Gower.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions just to clarify things. If a three bag limit were to pass, I just want to make sure you would still accept residential garbage if someone was to drive it to the trail road landfill. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct.
And that is charged by weight currently? Would that still be the case post implementation?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Those rates are set annually through the budget process and available on the city's website.
And is there anything in the solid waste master plan that's being developed currently? Is there any plan to to look at policies around what? Residents or the general public can take to the trail road landfill?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, as part of the residual waste management strategy, which was approved last year, through last year. Staff had committed to to look at options for the materials, the types of materials that currently come to trail. In order to to see if there were other opportunities in order to encourage diversion. So that will continue.
Okay. And there's been some talk about provincial diversion targets. Can you? Help us understand what if we don't meet those targets? Are there penalties or what? What's the consequence if we don't meet those targets?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, we don't have great clarity from from the province of Ontario. It is something that we continue to work with our partners. In other municipalities and through the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to understand what the potential implications could be.
Okay, thank you. I guess some thoughts on the decision in front of us. Obviously, this is a hard decision. Lots of different opinions around the table and from residents. And I think as for the brown car motion, I think it moves us in a better way, in a better position than we are today. So I I won't vote against it. But I'm I'm concerned that we are trying to anticipate every single exception and edge case and in doing so, we have watered down. The staff proposal significantly. The objective is diversion and based on the best practices and experience and the data. I'm concerned that we will not achieve that diversion, which is the whole reason we entered into this discussion in the first place. It's kind of the opposite of scope creep. We've started just to to take away a lot of things that were important. The three items is an incredibly generous allotment. It's four hundred twenty liters. I think somebody said ninety nine pounds earlier, but I find it easier to visualize. That's the size of a large chest freezer. You know, that you might put in your basement, like a deep freeze. That's an incredible amount of of waste that we would allow people to put out every two weeks. And and every pound of garbage going to the landfill that could otherwise be diverted is waste. It's inefficiency. It's a cost to the city. And in any other municipal realm. If there were inefficiencies, we'd be moving as quickly as possible to address that inefficiency. There's a eight point four million opportunity to avoid costs by diverting as quickly as possible. And and every year that we can extend that landfill, there's one point one million to three million dollars in savings. So. It amazes me that we're not more bullish on moving as quickly as possible. We can avoid millions of dollars of cost here. I have a bit of optimism that with all the attention around this, I think a lot of households have been thinking a lot about their waste management. Practices. I know my household has and many residents I've spoken to as well. Be interesting to see over the last month if some of the diversion rates have improved just because people are becoming more aware about. You can put a plastic bag in your green bin or about different options through Waste Explorer. So. You know, in a, in a, maybe a fortunate thing out of this whole discussion is that people are aware and sometimes it takes some controversy to bring it top of mind. So thank you to staff and looking forward to the rest of the discussion today. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gower, councillor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank staff for all your hard work to to date the extensive consultation, the technical briefing. All of the emails I'm sure you received from members of council to address our residents' concerns as these policy options were being proposed. You know, we've got two options in front of us and I'm just trying to ascertain what the best policy decision I can make today for. The residents that we represent now, but also the future residents of our city. So to that end, I just have a few questions. So during your consultation, one of the key themes that you communicated was that residents really wanted flexibility. They didn't want to be penalized for maybe every week of their, every other week they put out one item of garbage, but maybe after the holiday party they put out three. And so that was a key ask from our residents. So I just want to understand how these two different policy options address that. So the brown motion talks about yellow bags. I'm not very familiar with this program, I'll be honest. So I'm just trying to understand how that would work, what the average cost to residents would be to purchase a bag. What the administrative cost would be to the city to enter into agreements with partners to participate in the yellow bag program. So maybe I'll stop there, let you answer that question before going on to the other option.
No problem. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the, pardon me, thank you for the question, councillor. So in terms of, I would say. Both of the potential or both of the motions that are on the table right now do offer flexibility, whether it be through the opportunity to purchase additional tags, to set out additional. Waste above a firm item limit or through the yellow bag program. So in terms of the yellow bag program, so it currently exists for small businesses. So we have just over about three hundred small businesses that are registered. So it allows them, if they're generating less than sixteen bags of waste. The city will provide green bin as well as recycling and garbage collection services. So we're looking at leveraging this opportunity. We have existing partnerships with a number of different retailers, home hardware's in particular across the city. We also sell at our city client service centers across the city. In terms of the cost, so under the yellow bag program today, the cost of a bag is four dollars and thirty cents. The bags are sold in packages of four, so at about seventeen dollars and twenty cents. Pour per bag or per four. And then if you'll recall, under the original staff proposal for the tag based system, we were proposing. Tags be sold at a cost of about three dollars per tag and that was to reflect full cost recovery.
Okay, thank you for that. So the divine motion, it talks about the city providing fifteen additional tags. To each resident. And so obviously there's a cost to the city to administer that program. So. A couple of questions here. So one, I want to understand the difference between the original staff recommendation of fifty five tags. What was the cost to administer that program? Versus the cost to administer the fifteen tags. And then I noted that the city of Hamilton also has a two bag firm limit and they provide fourteen additional tags free of charge on request. And I'm wondering if there was any, if you analyzed at all what the cost would be to deliver a program like that. So if we were to amend it even further and say, okay, we'll provide fifteen tags, but only upon request, which might. Be less costly from a minister perspective.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of the, the one, the difference when looking at the original staff proposal compared to the. The councillor Devine and Lee promotion is. There was certainly a reduction in costs. Under the original staff proposal, we were proposing mailing out an annual allotment of tags to every single household. So there was quite a significant reduction in costs associated with that. So almost half a million dollars. So with the one time cost, that one time allocation of fifteen tags per household per year, that drops it to about eighty two thousand dollars. So that's a one time cost.
And do we have any indication if we were to move towards something like the city of Hamilton where it was on request, would there be an even further reduction in the administrative costs to the municipality?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we, we haven't done the the analysis on that in particular, but under, under the city of Hamilton, because they do allow that flexibility, it's an ongoing annual cost. Just at a high level, you, I could anticipate that the the additional operating cost or the pressure would be upwards of about eighty two thousand dollars per year to provide that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can elaborate also on the city of Hamilton program, they, they do provide free tags on request. What they've shared is the trend that they're seeing right now is that because people know that it's, that there's no charge, they're seeing an increase in terms of the request for tags. So which is impacting basically the diversion piece. So even the city of Hamilton are kind of revisiting their program at this point.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I did have questions. I think councillor Kelly asked them around enforcement. Obviously, we have a six bag limit now. We don't enforce in that. If we approve the three bag limit today, it will only be effective if we step up our enforcement. Because what I heard is if, if a resident has four items that they want to put out. That if if we don't pick it up, their only other option is to take it to the trail road facility, which I I can't imagine. I mean, if. People are already feeling like it would be too cumbersome to buy an extra tag. I can't believe that they're actually going to take that bag and drive it to the trail road facility. And so. That makes me think that illegal dumping would actually increase if we approve the the three bag limit versus the more flexible, you know, two, two. Bags plus tags. So is there any research on whether or not a firm bag limit actually increases the illegal dumping versus a tag a bag system that's more flexible?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of, there's certainly an increased risk. However, through the, through councillor Brown's motion. There is that intent to to offer additional flexibility for additional items through leveraging the yellow bag program. So instead of allowing residents to purchase. Tags, it's to purchase city issued bags.
And I guess just to belabor the points, the the yellow bag program is. Is cheaper for the municipality to administer than tags. Is that sort of the crux of this issue here is that we don't want to incur additional costs with the heavy administration?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I think the the city staff will be coming back, looking to see what opportunities exist, recognizing that the yellow bag program exists today. As Nicole mentioned, that there are retailers already. So there, there, a lot of the physical infrastructure is in place. And looking to see how we can leverage that in order to minimize the overall cost in order to provide residents with that flexibility.
Right. Because if it's more than eighty two thousand dollars a year, then this system will actually be more expensive for our residents because the bags will be four dollars and thirty cents versus a tag at three dollars. So there's a risk here. That the administrative cost could be very similar to what the divine motion is being proposed, in which case this is going to be more costly for residents than the tag a bag system. So. I I don't need an answer to that, but because we'll find out, but I think that's a risk here that we should all understand. There's an amendment motion to the brown motion that councillor Devine and myself are asking to move and it's around implementation timelines. So. If the the three bag limit is approved, obviously it's a much easier transition for residents than the six, than the tag a bag. So would staff be willing to advance the timelines around implementation so we could start realizing those diversion targets earlier?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, councillor. Yeah, because a three item firm limit is much. It will require less planning in comparison to the original staff proposal. So we do anticipate that we can, we can advance the implementation of policy.
Thank you. And then just my final question, because it comes up a lot in emails, I think, for all of us and we debated it last council too, and it's around this idea of incineration being the sort of panacea solution to our our garbage problems. And. I just want to understand that, let's say we do move towards an incineration solution in the future. Does that doesn't mean that we don't need to divert our waste. Is that not correct? Like, it's not a burn at all kind of situation. Like, we are still going to have to make these difficult behavioral. Changes to divert waste and that this is one step in that. So maybe staff could clarify that for, for us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's correct. Regardless of the solution that we're looking at at the end, whether it's a landfill incineration, waste of energy. We are anticipating that there will continue to be a requirement to divert. Waste so that basically anything that should not be in the waste stream is taken out of the waste stream.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll just wrap up and and echo some of my comments that are comments that councillor Gower had shared around watering this down. You know, we usually say that good policy is when we take a little bit of water with our wine and I feel like this just tastes like water. I'm I'm not sure that we. We are achieving what we had set out as as part of our solid waste master plan. And so I'm really torn about what to do. I will be supporting the divine motion because I think that that option actually provides us. The most flexibility for our residents and that was a key consideration as part of this consultation. They wanted that flexibility. And I think it's a huge risk with the brown motion of, you know, whether this is actually going to be cheaper. It could be actually more expensive for residents and there's that. Firm limit. And, you know, I think of that little old lady who's cleaning out her garage and 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 under this system of a tag a bag, she's got flexibility under. The potential brown motion, it's going to be more expensive potentially to dispose of her waste. So. I haven't decided how I'm going to be voting on on the the brown motion yet and I look forward to hearing the discussion. So thank you very much and thanks staff for all your work on this.
Thank you, councillor Bradley, councillor Dave Hush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to ask a number of questions and some of them I, I asked that committee on that fateful day of deadlock. Not because, you know, the answers weren't good, but I think, you know, there still continues to be a lot of. Questions in the community and and I certainly bring some, some skepticism to to the original policy, having lived through. Voting for the organics program, originally voting for going to biweekly. So again, I think. You know, I'm very interested in, in, again, hearing some of the the answers from staff. And one of the questions I think many of us get. Is why do we have to divert? Why can't we go towards a waste energy or what? Why can't we? Simply, you know, not focus on so much on the diversion. And I know your answer is going to be that, you know, there, there are some very steep. Expectations from the province in terms of diversion for the city of Ottawa, that even with. Alternatives to what we're doing, we would still be required to have. Diversion. So can you just speak to that, please? I think it's important.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start and then I'll ask Shelley and Nicole to to fill in the, because this was a good discussion at at committee. I think if we go back to regardless of what the end outcome is in terms of the future solution, whether it's a landfill, energy to waste and generation. There's an ongoing operating costs to those facilities in terms of the waste that we're, that we're sending. So what we're looking at is basically. What is the cheapest solution for residents to be able to process that waste? And and right now, the cheapest solution is basically anything that's recyclable. Should be going to the recycling because that is being paid for the, by the producers and no longer the taxpayers. So the more that we continue to send recyclables to, through the waste stream. Those are things that the taxpayers are having to pick up in costs and not the producers. And we want to make sure that basically we we offload as much of that to the producers as we can. When it comes to the organics piece, we have a processing for the organics that's specific to that stream. And we currently have converters and eventually we're going to be coming back with a strategy around how we're going to be dealing with. Organics post convertus and there will be energy opportunities there also. But organics and landfills, organics and incineration, organics and waste of energy. Really don't work well together. It's not a, it's not a product that's easily managed or combustible. And in the case of landfill. It's basically contributing to basically the landfill gas that we're having to to manage. So that's why our focus has been around. The lowest cost alternative is basically diverting at source. So that what we're remaining with in terms of processing is a good reduce our ongoing operational costs and that's really our focus right now.
Can you speak to the provincial regulations for diversion?
Yeah, so the provincial regulations right now are basically by, by the end of this year, we're supposed to be at a seventy percent. Diversion target and by the end of twenty thirty, basically we've eliminated organics from the processing stream.
Okay, moving on, I did, I did read your memo on on kind of how we got here and. Okay, moving on, I did I did read your memo on on kind of how we got here and and sort of the estimations of of the landfill capacity and how that has varied over time. And I'm pleased to see in this motion that we're going to have a third-party look at it, just to make sure that we are are getting some some good data. This is an area where we don't meter the garbage. So there is some assumptions that go into it. There's sampling that goes into it. So I'm pleased to see that. And again, the memo, I think, showed that there was some history of up and down. I I guess, do we accept a question? Do we accept ICI at Trail Road? And if we do, why why are we doing that? Like, if 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 we're running out of curbside capacity, then maybe we should be out of the ICI business, since there's alternatives there, and and really preserving the space for the majority of the people, and certainly the majority of people in my ward. Thanks.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, as part of the residual waste management strategy, are look, we are looking at other streams that currently come to Trail Road and looking at opportunities to adjust the tipping fee in order to incentivize some of these companies to possibly look at reuse opportunities, just thinking about concrete, for example. It doesn't need to come to trail. It could be used in a recycling-type application for aggregate for road building, for example. Currently, through what we receive at Trail, eighty-two percent of that is residential waste. So a high percentage right now of of the materials that come across the scale are attributed to residential waste. But in order to ensure that we are making best use of the space that we have for our requirements under the province to have a place for residential waste, we will continue to to look for those opportunities to reduce the acceptance of ICNI and bring back to to this council those opportunities within this term.
Good. I look forward to that. I think it's important because I think part of the framing of this is this this wave of guilt that we're putting on people that we're failing when, you know, we're not, we can do better. But again, the the capacity potentially is beaten, being eaten up by other things other than the curbside. So look forward to that. Wanted to ask you about the the organics, the the plastic and the decision of the last council to allow plastics, which I think was one of the best decisions that that council made. And it should have broken the back of the green bin program. And I continue to run into residents who don't know about it. I was speaking to seniors in Riverside South the other day, and I said, you know, when you're have a loaf of bread and you're down to the crust, just throw the bag in the crust in the green bin. You know, when you're finishing your cereal and none of the kids in the house want to eat that bottom portion, throw that in the green bin. You know, when the cheese starts to go moldy, throw that with the plastic in that. Like, why aren't we telling people this so that they're they're going to be more willing and and they find the convenience in in the green bin? So again, I that that decision should have broken the back of the program, and the three percent is just astonishing. And I just want to hear what what what's going on there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of points there, Counselor, just to mention, I think, on the communications piece first and foremost. I know you're aware, back in 2019, we did undertake a year-long, quite an extensive communication campaign, as well as door-to-door outreach in different pockets in the community that we were able to target, recognizing that they have lower levels of diversion. So and the focus was really in and around kind of the convenience piece, the the fact that we do accept the use of plastic bags to get rid of that yuck factor. So we did report back into council back in 2021. We saw actually quite success, and Ms. Lantay Seymour can probably speak to it a little bit more, but quite a successful campaign, recognizing there's still always opportunity for us to continue to do more. So as part of our annual communications planning, we do look at continuing different opportunities to to communicate the benefits of that. And just on the on the the piece about the three percent. So it was actually through the original staff projections, within the first year of implementing that change. The we were in line with the the initial projections. So the initial projections were that that policy decision would achieve about three percent diversion rate. So we were successful in achieving what was originally modeled in terms of what we'd originally presented to council as what we saw could be the opportunity from implementing that policy change.
Good. Good to hear. And my advice is, don't be timid in the communication of this, that that, well, we accept plastics. When that decision was made at that council, there was a lot of lane changing. Plastics are bag. We don't want to promote plastic bags. You should pick a lane, and we're picking the lane that we want people to find it convenient to participate in this program. So don't be timid when we get into that 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 promotion. I want to ask, and I raised it at committee, we've got, obviously, the organics facility in the southeast part of the city. Fair, a lot of traffic on Hawthorne right now, a lot of traffic on Bank Street. These are rural roads. They're carrying urban loads. And, you know, we're going to work hard to improve the road network out there. I was pleasantly surprised to hear that you actually think that the road, that the the truck traffic will diminish over time. And I I'd like to hear you say that again for the record, because I hope that's the case.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, sorry, just a hard time hearing. Counselor, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, just on the, you'd mentioned at committee that, and stop my claps, this is a repeat question. But the 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 road network, obviously, in the southeast part of the city, has a combination of residential traffic and and a lot of trucks from the rural industries, but also the trucks from the the organics facility there. And at committee, I asked you whether there'd be an increase or reduction, and you you seem to believe that there'd be a reduction over time on the on Hawthorne and Bank Street for trucks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. So currently today, the vehicles that collect the organics are a dual stream. So on one half, they have the recycling, and on the other half, they have the the organics. As council is aware, in 2026, we will be out of the recycling collection business. And later this year, we'll be bringing forward to council for consideration a new curbside collection contract. At that time, we anticipate that full rear-pack loads will be picking up organics. So currently today, where a vehicle may make two trips to convert us, because they'll have capacity in their vehicle, they'll probably only make one trip. So currently today, depending on the season, there could be anywhere from forty to eighty vehicles going to convert us. We anticipate that to to go in half, starting in 2026.
Okay, thank you. One of the data sources that I'm interested in is on the per capita diversion. Because we've seen a tremendous amount of growth in the city, hundreds of thousands of people over the last decade. I mean, that's obviously contributing. It's that that's that's just waste going to it. So like, how are we doing on per capita diversion? Do we have any data on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of per capita, I think one of the interesting trends that we've seen despite population growth with the number of different policy initiatives that have been implemented by council over the past decade. We've actually seen a fairly consistent level of tonnages when it comes to when it comes to waste, despite population growth, and that can really be attributed back to the increase in waste diversion. So with that, we've been fairly consistent when it comes to our capita waste generation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those answers. I'll be supporting the compromise motion today. I did hear from residents that they don't want to build another bureaucracy. We have pressures right across the city and another of other files where I think we can better have those FTEs. And I again, I think there's going to be some work to do to to adopt this, and one of those areas will be, again, on the success of the green bin and making sure that people understand that they can use plastics and not feel bad about it and help us with our diversion targets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeRash. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I I've been trying to organize my thoughts. I went for a long walk last night in College Ward. It actually was garbage night. So I got to look at garbage and think about garbage, and it was wonderful. It was very relaxing. It took my mind off everything. I just, you know, it made me think about when I was canvassing, too, right? And as I was going door-to-door, very few people in College Ward were telling me to lower their taxes or freeze their taxes. But what they were begging me to do was to bring forward more accountability and value for money, for the money that they are spending, their hard-earned money on property taxes, on their waste levies, and making sure that we demonstrate a real fiscal responsibility around the table. And so, you know, Counselor Gower scooped me, but I I I continue to be surprised that we are not considering the savings to the taxpayer when it comes to the two-bag-plus tags motion. I I appreciate that the idea of of putting tags on feels like bureaucracy, but in terms of behavior change, and I would like to say again that I do have experience creating multi-residential diversion programs for residents of Ottawa. You need to make the invisible visible. The tags create a a moment where you make your actions visible, and that creates a moment of reflection and personal accountability. The City of Ottawa is is in charge of, I've heard people say, the city should go back to basics, go back to basics. Garbage collection is a basic. We do provide that service. However, it is not, as far as I am concerned, the city's responsibility to alone, to take responsibility for consumers' actions. I believe we can share that responsibility, and I believe that's what tags does. I appreciate my counselors, Carr and Brown, for their motion. I appreciate that there has been some attempt to bring together different perspectives. I am concerned about the addition of the yellow bag program because I believe it offers the flexibility that we were trying to achieve through the two-bag-plus-tag motion. But instead of a two-bag firm limit, we're now eking out to three. I I don't understand why, when we are seventy-five percent compliant with the two-bag limit, that we would consider budgeting for a program that increases service for one hundred percent of our population. I don't know how I can go back and sell that math to my residents who are asking me to be more financially responsible with their dollars. I think, you know, environmental arguments aside, we have an opportunity to create a targeted program. Counselor King has a motion about targeted education. We can address our most, I don't know, our least participating residents, and we can uphold the the evidence-based decision-making of of holding a two-bag limit. If we want to disparage the data that has come forward and to say that we don't believe the data that's come forward, I mean, that's, I think, also, you know, you can have a lot of conviction around that, but conviction doesn't necessarily mean that that anyone is right here. So I know that most people already know the way they want to vote on this, but I just wanted to be able to put in my my two cents for, as as Counselor Troster said, giving people the opportunity to participate successfully with the evidence-based program instead of offering a more expensive program to a hundred percent of the population. I am concerned that by being fair around this table, we have proverbially proverbially cut the baby in half. That's a, that's an old Bible story. King Solomon, when we were trying to be, treat everybody fairly, we decided we were going to cut the baby in half. So here we are. We have a policy where we cut the baby in half. Are we actually doing what is intended with the policy to aim for our provincial targets? I mean, I also understand that we're at committee tomorrow going to talk about the province supporting us for, you know, forty-some more paramedics year over year. I want to demonstrate to the province that we can be bold and careful with our pennies before we go and ask them for more support in some of our other crises that are competing with this one. I want to demonstrate that leadership here so they know they can count on us to be thoughtful elsewhere. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to start by thanking Counselors Brown and Counselors Carr and and you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing everyone together. That is what leadership actually is. It's not, doesn't need to be a war. People can actually work together. And you brought everyone together, and this is what we have in front of us. The other thing I wanted to thank everyone for was this opportunity to discuss this. We've had the four-bag option or four-item, just to make sure we're all clear on that, four-item option. We had the three. Now we had the two with the tags, and we had the deferred for more information. That's what what councils are supposed to do. They're supposed to look at all the options. The staff recommendation was the staff recommendation because staff gives us their best advice. That's what they do. And at a high level, we take that advice, and then we determine from our perspective whether that will work. So at our briefings, I said to staff, you know, my advice is come out with your best advice. That's what you're supposed to do. And staff did that. That was their best advice at the time. And I will say that when staff were collecting data and consulting, a number of things were not in that consultation, right? So at the time, we went out a couple of years ago, consulted, and there was no provincial blue box option. There was no talk of waste to energy as a new option then. Yellow bags were not thought of until even just recently as an option for putting out additional garbage when necessary to be flexible. And really, at committee, as you may remember, maybe I was not there. And I'm glad I wasn't, because I think what has happened here is now we have many more options in front of us, and people have worked together instead of just looking at those two options and that being it. So yes, I was at the Hydro Ottawa meeting, but I'm glad I wasn't there. I'm glad it ended in a tie, and here we are today. So I think if I were there, I probably would have voted for the four bags, but I wouldn't have liked it. I didn't like the two bags with the tags, so the bureaucracy was too overwhelming. I think the people of Kanata and their responses to me have said, if we could do something that doesn't involve a lot more bureaucracy and a lot more cost, we would appreciate that. Now, going back to people and saying there's flexibility with three in a yellow bag, there's flexibility with the provincial blue box. You have an incentive, I guess, with the provincial blue box, that if you don't recycle, and the city has to deal with that recyclable material, and I've gone out to my community with that, that means the city will have to pay to recycle that, and then potentially your taxes will go up. That's an incentive to people that they actually care about, and they have appreciated knowing about now. So, I mean, when I look at this motion in front of us for the three bags, I think it has achieved everything we wanted it to. But fundamentally, the education campaign will be the key. And I think this brings flexibility. It has an educational component, which I love. There's an incentive. And then there's hope for with Counselor Hubley's motion, a waste-to-energy solution that's still to come. So I appreciate Counselor Kelly that we would maybe want to defer for more information. But I think that we're going to get more information as we, whether we like it or not, and I think we will like it. So I would encourage you to support the three bags. I think that's what will end up passing here. But I just really am thankful that we're having this conversation. Last night at the school board, they decided not to discuss. The school board likes to just not talk about anything that's controversial. We actually talk about things that are controversial. So nice to be here instead of there. So I'm going to be supporting the three bags, and I thank everyone for their help.
Thank you, Counselor Curry. Counselor Carr?
Thank you very much. I'll echo what everyone has said. Thank you to everyone. Thank you to staff. Thank you to my colleagues. Today is very much my lucky day. Not only do I get to, am I put in the awkward position where I'm actually going to vote against something that I originally crafted, but as the only counselor who's actually had an article written about them because they voted wrong, I'm actually first on the voters' list as well. So it's it's very special to me today. So over the last, following the environment committee meeting, where we were deadlocked, it was clear to me that we were not going to make any progress. And I suspect if those same two motions were here today, we would also be deadlocked, especially that there's twenty-four of us here. I don't think being deadlocked is an answer for the residents of Ottawa. I don't think having fifty percent of counselors dissatisfied is an answer. And that's why I committed to working with Counselor Brown so closely on something that could serve Ottawa. And Ottawa is very unique. We are two thousand eight hundred square kilometers. We are rural. We are suburban. We are urban. And what is important to me and what is important to all of you is diversion. That's what's been very, very clear to me throughout everything. We all have the same goals. We don't want dumping. We don't want expensive administrative programs. That's not what anyone wants. We also want to be accountable to our residents, and I was really pleased to work with Counselor Brown on something that is a compromise. So as I mentioned, I've been put in the awkward position. I didn't realize my original motion was coming back. They say that imitation is the greatest form of flattery, so I I thank my council colleagues for bringing that back. So I'm going to tell you, and because that was my original motion, I'm in a unique position of actually knowing what's wrong with it. So I will tell you why you should not vote for that motion. So first of all, we've heard a lot about how the new motion is going to have more garbage and less diversion. But what you're essentially creating with bag-a-tag is basically the equivalent of private healthcare for residents. There is no limit to how many bags, tags you can purchase. So I've heard a lot of concerns about low-income residents, but if I've got a lot of money, I can purchase limitless amounts of bag tags. So it doesn't really help with diversion in that way. We're also giving fifteen tags to every single resident, setting up a program, but we've got two free bags under that. So you're setting up a program basically for people that can't respect the limit. So a whole brand-new program for that twenty-six percent of people who aren't meeting the the limit, essentially. That's what you're doing. And I think that's a problem. I think it's a problem that you're mailing out fifteen tags to, do you know how many residents are in curbside waste diversion? Three hundred and six thousand. So you're sending out four million tags with no expiry date. So three million tags going to the the seventy-four percent of people that probably don't need them, no expiry date. And to be clear, it's not just bags, it's items. So for years and years, people are going to be able to bet, put a tag on a couch, put a tag on a bulky item. So for years and years, people are going to be able to bet, put a tag on a couch, put a tag on a bulky item. So that's one reason it doesn't work. You know, other things that aren't great about it. You know, we heard councillor Johnson, I think, said value for money. Is there a lot of value in creating a brand-new system? I don't think so. So now I'm going to tell you why my new motion is so wonderful. And certainly I've left off some other reasons why the other one is not great. So on this motion, we're not creating a new program. We're using, potentially if you've got an exceptional circumstance, yellow bags, not yellow items. So you're not going to be able, there's no, none of that residual big bulky items that can go out with your grandfather tags that you're giving to people. It also covers a lot of things that we discussed. The farm exemption, it covers the data. It covers bringing up the motion, implementing this a little bit earlier. We've put every two weeks, no later than the end of Q2. I see somebody's challenging that to Q1. I'm going to argue that no later than Q2 also includes that. We've asked, and I want to give a shout-out to councillor De Rose, who put together a motion last time on asking for the auditor general. We're asking for a third-party review of the information. We need to make sure that the set-out rates are right, that we've seen them reported differently. We need to make sure that we're increasing our diversion rates. There's lots of other reasons why I can tell you, but typically I used up almost all of my time. So I encourage you to support the motion that was developed collaboratively, to support the motion that doesn't develop a new system, just for people that, you know, want to have a privatized tag system for the people who can buy limitless amounts. And I would also just encourage you to support me because I'm first on the voters' list. Have a great day.
Thank you councillor Carr. Councillor Lowe?
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't know how I'm going to follow up on that. The, so, no, the thing that I've been communicating with my residents is I keep using my own experiences from my hometown. We had a bag-and-tag program in that town. And when you lost your tags and you didn't really want to request a new sheet of them, like, what would you do? You would just go to a park and illegally dump your items. And I don't know if my mom watches these meetings, but she did that. So I'm really sorry for outing her that way. But there are two points that are kind of emerging for me based on the discussion that we've been having so far. And I seem to get the impression that there may have not been a perceived need over the last decade, given that our waste diversion, per capita waste diversion, has been relatively consistent. I don't, like, I'm getting the impression that we may not have seen the need to really recommend any new actions, especially given some of the education items that we're talking about today, the IPR that's going to start, that we're transitioning into starting in the summer. So, you know, at the real point for the tags, it seems like, it seems like we're just trying to impose ourselves on our residents for something that most households are already compliant on. So I am, you know, I am supportive of the three-bag limits and with that, like, I guess my question to staff is like, what's the cost reduction that we, I think you gave a percentage earlier, but I think I missed it. But what's the cost reduction that we're going to realize with this three-bag limit? And, you know, will those savings be there for then passed on to our residents? Item, three item.
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor, in terms of operating costs, so compared to the original staff proposal, it's almost a million dollars in a reduction in operating costs compared to the councillor divine motion. It's about five hundred thousand dollars less than operating costs. However, there is no revenue offset opportunity. So the cost per household is actually slightly more, about ten percent more, or sorry, ten cents more. But I also don't want to lose the fact that there would be a less of a cost avoidance with, as we do anticipate, that there would be less waste reduction under that three-item limit compared to a two-item limit. So with that, there will be less of a cost avoidance opportunity for that, as well as less of a cost avoidance opportunity for our collections.
Thanks very much. Then to build on councillor Carr's point about those tags being like private healthcare, you know, if, I have a feeling that one of those tags only bunned me if I voted in favor of that from my residents. But I'm, you know, with the advancements in green bin, the popularity of biodegradable plastic bags, like, it's becoming and more and more people, more and more residents are realizing that it is an option. It is a good option for diversion. And when people raise issues about garbage smelling because it's only collected every two weeks, that's what the green bin is for. That's what the green bin resolves. And with the allowance of plastic bags and further with biodegradable plastic bags, that, you know, really does promote one of the things that the province really wants us to divert. So I, you know, the point of this is I am supportive of the three-bag limit and I do look forward to finishing up this discussion so we can finally focus on the bigger picture is the baseline issue that we have here. It's what we're going to do about the landfill. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lowe. Councillor Kits?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some clarifying questions and I will share some comments. You know, I think we've all heard a lot from rural Ottawa on this issue. They care a lot about it because in addition to city parks, we know that the rural area will be the dumping ground for unwanted waste. We already see this happen regularly, but also because this is a core service. I chose to live in the rural area. I love my community. But when it comes to city services, we're not connected to city water or natural gas. We have ditches that we maintain ourselves in lieu of sewers. I have no sidewalks or streetlights. My street has never been resurfaced. My closest park is a fifty-two-minute walk. Closest transit stop, an hour and thirty minutes walk. And I could go on, but our snow gets cleared and our garbage and recycling gets picked up. So I think it's more than fair that we have heard passionately from this area on this issue. So what measures are being considered to mitigate the risk of increased illegal dumping?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of the, there's still the request on the table in terms of the proposal for two additional full-time solid waste inspectors that would be tasked with helping enhance our efforts for illegal dumping in addition to the original capital request. So there will be a capital request, or sorry, an opera, yes, a capital request as part of the 2024 budget process that will include temporary resources to help support additional enforcement of illegal dumping. So we'll be working closely with our colleagues by law services as well as road services in terms of developing that plan and strategy. Our intent is to bring back that evidence-based enforcement strategy for council consideration as part of the implementation plan as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing that. And no matter which motion gets approved today, what will happen if a resident puts out more than what we do? So, you know, let's say we go with a three-container limit. They put out more than that, what happens to the garbage that's left behind? Or the?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The intent would be, of course, to be a robust education, communications and outreach campaign for that initial three months leading up to the policy change. So our recommendation would stand, no matter what motion is approved by council today, that would hold true. We would have a graduated approach to enforcement. So the intent with that would be, of course, education first and foremost to each of the households as it exists today. You know, if an additional item is set out, we can put up that oop sticker. If that happens again, we would have a solid waste inspector that would be able to knock on the resident's door and have a conversation about making sure that they had the necessary information as well as the necessary bins to properly divert. And that would eventually gradually progress to leaving the extra item behind as a last resort. And that was actually just bringing in some of what we heard through public engagement. Leaving items behind that are improperly set out were supported by about sixty-one percent of residents as the ideal approach to enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, if I can also elaborate on one of the point that the councillor made about illegal dumping, and I know it definitely has been a significant concern. I think the context that I'd like to provide is that the more significant change that actually took place was in 2012 when we moved to bi-weekly garbage, where essentially a hundred percent of residents were impacted by that change. The change that we're looking at right now will affect about three-quarters or won't affect about three-quarters of residents. So it's not every single residence that will be impacted or that illegal dumping concerns will apply. Plus, what we're seeing right now is we're seeing some legal dumping ongoing now. But from a bylaw perspective, out of about sixty-five thousand bylaw requests or service requests that they get, around two hundred and fifty are related to illegal dumping. So there's some that's going on now. But if it was a significant concern, it would still be tied to that bi-weekly garbage concern. So we do expect to be, to see a spike and that's why we're looking at the additional enforcement. But it's also something that we see as being short-lived and will stabilize again after a few months.
Okay. I look forward to reviewing that once it's in place. Thank you for the answer. And I also want to thank staff for giving us the additional information about landfill capacity that I had requested. I know that the staff recommendation would extend the landfill two years and that you've advised the Brown-Carr motion will extend the life less than two years. Can you be at all more specific on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The modeling that was completed was based on the staff recommendation and the firm limit modeling hasn't been completed. So at this point, we can't comment further, recognizing though that we will be reporting back. So then that way council is aware of the diversion that we are achieving through any motion that is approved today.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for those answers. I will note my time was running while the staffer was responding. And I'm normally not a stickler, but I do have some comments. I want to thank everyone who's reached out to my office voicing their concerns about this issue. One of the reasons I ran to be a councillor was because I wanted to see people more engaged in municipal issues and I don't think any of us can deny we've had engagement on this. And also thank you to my staff for answering countless emails and phone calls. I want residents to know that even if I didn't respond personally, I have read every piece of correspondence and also appreciate all the in-person conversations I've had as well. And I want to pick up on some of the comments my colleagues have made because I get asked all the time, how's the new council? How are you getting along? And I brag about us. I brag about the willingness to collaborate and see things from a different perspective and the approach you've taken, Mr. Mayor, on bringing this council together. It's refreshing and it's important. And so I was happy to give my feedback and work with colleagues on the Brown-Carr compromise motion. I think there's some good stuff in here, including consideration for agricultural properties, the feasibility of expanding the yellow bag program, the communications plan. And I do think it strikes a right balance of responding to resident feedback, but also moving the needle on the waste diversion strategy. We are going from complete lawlessness. And quite frankly, I can't believe it's taking us this long to drop the hammer on that. And that's why I couldn't support councillor Kelly's motion, even though I agreed with everything you said when you introduced it. And at the same time, I struggle with tags because of the administrative burden and the added bureaucracy. And in, this is really a conversation about behavior change, as councillor Johnson noted. And in my reading on the psychology of behavior change, because that's what I've been doing before bed over the last month, attitudes and beliefs need to shift before behavior changes. So as a city, I think we really have a gift. Everyone is talking about garbage. Amazing. We have the ear of the public on this. Let's use that opportunity to educate our residents on why this is important, why we need behaviors to change, not only for the obvious environmental aspects, but as LA was saying, now that we're transitioning to the provincial blue box system, there is a financial interest in residents diverting because there's a cost to taxpayers to pick up garbage, but there won't be a cost to recycle. And I know that there's been frustration among councillors about this being piecemeal. So I think we also need to myth-bust that incineration is still on the table. Capacity, dealing with multi-residential is still on the table. We'll be dealing with that later and that the province is going after producers. But curbside is part of the puzzle. And I think we all need to participate in that conversation as councillors. I saw councillor Hills organizing volunteer resident education on diversion. We should all be doing that. I'm militant about recycling, not because the city is forcing me to, it's voluntary. And I think we can get there. A lot of us are former professional communicators. Let's use our platform and let's radically educate our community and make it easy for people to do the right thing. Councillor Leaper was teasing me about being overly optimistic. I am optimistic. My garbage can is half-full and I think this is a positive step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kits. Councillor Lulov?
Very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've spoken twice already on the co-opted Lazarus motion that's before us today on bag tags that for some reason is back before us. So I'll save you the greatest hits recap, but not before sharing a joke that Marty Carr shared with me earlier today. There's a hundred and thirty-two pay-as-you-throw programs across Ontario and the last one was implemented in 2017 in Waterloo. All of these were implemented before the 2017 provincial direction. So, you know, us implementing a tag-a-bag is like buying a VCR to watch a new release today. This first motion belongs in the black bin. That's for the education piece that councillor King has asked for. Through the Brown-Carr motion, you know, I'm pleased to see that we've decided not to raise taxes. I'm pleased that some councillors were engaged to form a consensus. That's nice to see. And I'm pleased to see that there's some considerations for our farmers in the rural area. I guess I've, you know, councillor Brown and councillor Carter thank for that. I'm displeased that this is not couched in a long-term plan. And when you set out on a journey, it's best to know where your destination is before you take the first step. I worry that today we're presupposing an outcome and that outcome will be to build a new landfill as we may not have the volume required to explore waste-to-energy options that will produce lower GHGs than a new landfill and provide an opportunity to make lemonade out of the plastic nets that we buy our lemons in. Burying our garbage is not a progressive solution to our solid waste management challenges. This is why decisions need to be made in context with all of the options before us. The world does not operate in four-year cycles. Today, we are only extending the life of our landfills by maybe one or two years. In two months, we're going to be discussing a long-term option that we won't even have collected any long-term data on, on the diversion rate of this compromise because it comes into effect after we vote on the new solid waste master plan. We won't have a long-term, any long-term data on multi-residential diversion and we won't have any data on diversion rates of the new provincial framework. So I'm disappointed that we are once again making a decision without all of the information that we could have had before us. That hasn't really worked for us in the past. To me, this should be about making a good decision, one that recognizes that extending the life of a landfill for one to two years isn't a good long-term vision. One that recognizes that we are about to have a good discussion on long-term solutions after the summer. And one that affords members of council who haven't been engaged in this file for the last twelve years, like some of us around the table, time to learn, to read and to investigate in order to make an informed decision on this file. I'd rather do what's right and make an informed decision couched in a long-term plan. I think in a rush to find something that members could rationalize their vote on, we lost the plot. We're taking the first step in a forty-year journey and we don't even know how we're going to get there. And for those of us that may think that the discussion is over after today because of a kumbaya motion, don't kid yourselves. It's just the beginning and instead of discussing this all at once in the fall, with all the information and options on the table, we get to do it all over again in a couple of months. Well, I guess I'll end by saying that I've always wanted to be as cool as Bill Murray. So I guess I'm looking forward to Groundhog Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Lulov. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you colleagues for our engaged discussion today. And the first two words on my speaker's list are my notes here are behavioral change, things that my colleagues have already raised. And, you know, North America, I think, has a prehistoric way of dealing with waste. When I talk in schools and I talk about when the city was first created, two men on a horse-drawn cart would collect garbage and they would go on the outskirts of the city where there was a big hole and they dumped that garbage in the hole and they put some soil on top and give it a pat and they'd come back in the city and do it all over again. Today, two men on a truck go to the neighborhoods and they pick up garbage and they go on the outskirts of the city where there's a big hole or a mountain and they put the garbage and they do exactly the same thing. Our priority needs to be to reduce the amount of waste that's created to begin with. That's the number one. And for the waste that is created, divert from the landfill is the close number two on that list. We already have diversion programs that exist, many. The three main ones are the blue, black and green bin programs that we've been operating in the city, some as early as nineteen eighty-seven. In addition to things like hazardous waste depots, take-it-back programs, e-waste, Riverward Hosts, Junk That Funk On Our Ward, we're the number one ward in the city for e-waste, tens of thousands- Junk that funk in our ward were the number one ward in the city for e-waste, tens of thousands of electronic waste collected every year diverted from the landfill. So Riverward residents are engaged, just like every other, because everyone creates waste and everyone has uh, interest in this. And they've been very engaged, my residents, in this process, and I thank them for that. And the question from Counselor Kits to staff about what happens if a household exceeds the limit that they're allowed to put out? And you talked about what we're going to have a an enforcement, sorry, a education campaign in advance. Uh, but at the end of the day, what happens when that fourth bag is put out there? Will the op, will the collector put a tag on it similar when I put my blue bin out on black bin week? And to say you've exceeded the amount, we're not picking it up? What exactly will the procedure look like if a household exceeds, whether it's two or three bags, depending on what we decide today?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so your counsel, you're you're raising a great point and and something that we do need to certainly document and make sure that we communicate. So it's known to all members of council as well as our inspectors and our collectors of what the expectation is. Uh, what I can speak to specifically is today, if items are out inappropriately, blue or black box out on the wrong day or or garbage that that's placed. Um, there is a a tag that's left by the collectors. Um, a, that information is relayed to the solid waste inspectors who then go and and they visit the property. Now, depending if this is a a frequent flyer, uh, because we do record the addresses and and understand if there are multiple. Occurrences of where we've we've tried to educate and and where that hasn't worked. Uh, there will be a notice of violation that's left, and that notice of violation uh, will require them to either clean up or bring that material in. Uh, or if it's collected, then it could be a chargeback. So all of those items are currently within the the solid waste bylaw, uh, identifying what those chargeback costs might be. But I will stress that we do need to work through this and come back as part of the implementation plan. So that way council has a full appreciation and understanding as well as our residents on what that process will be.
Thank you. There was basically a dismissal at committee by Waste Watch Ottawa that, hey, after three months, uh, the dumping issue will go away. And and the fact is, I've never seen so much in-park dumping in my ward. I've lived in my ward my whole life than we have in recent years. City parks, NCC green spaces, walk spaces, cul-de-sacs, uh, commercial and school property dumpsters being used where people drive up and unload garbage. That's happening now, and we've got to get ahead of this issue now. Forget, uh, put aside for a second the caps that we're talking about, but we have a garbage dumping problem in this city that we have to get ahead of and wrestle. Uh, the divine motion uh, has eliminated a clause that we saw at committee that talks about a third bag being permitted during the final week of December. Uh, and the first week of January. I, could I just ask for clarification as to why that clause was not included in the motion we have today, please?
Yeah, uh, thank you. It's um, it's a clause that I mulled over. And if it felt like the reinstatement of that clause was something that would gain more support for it, I would be certainly willing to consider it. Because that's not uh, the hill that I want to die on for sure in terms of this motion. But I will be clear in that uh, it did feel like it was prioritizing the high holidays of one group perhaps without the inclusion of the other. So I did have a little bit of a concern over that. But knowing that there are, you know, many high holidays around the end of the year, beginning of the new one, I would certainly consider it, especially if that is what is the deal breaker. Again, it's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern is the overall spirit of the of the motion itself.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to comment, a a speaker had indicated that if we go with a three-bay cap, we would be increasing service levels. Because right now the average is two point one for households, but we're not increasing service levels. The cap right now is six bags per household. We will be reducing the amount of waste that households can put out on the curb from six to three or six to two, depending on what most motion passes. I really want to see existing diversion programs fully utilized and subscribed to by the people of Ottawa. We're paying for these programs. They're paying for these programs. They exist. I put out less than one can of garbage every six weeks, because my my household fully utilizes the black bin, blue bin, green bin programs. What I think the people of Ottawa need help with is how do I get rid of the other stuff? Stuff that still has value. I I am terrible at at keeping stuff that I don't need anymore, because I think someone else out there needs it. And I don't want money for it. I just want a a medium or an opportunity to make those items available uh, for people who need them. So that's one thing. But to uh, the million-dollar question is, how do we convince people who are not using the green bin program? Who are not fully utilizing the black bin and blue bin programs to use those programs? I'm not convinced the bag tag program is the way to go. I've consistently stated this since I was elected, and I will be supporting. Uh, the motion that Counselor Brown and Carr have on the table at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Counselor Hubley.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and and I must say, uh, I'm really enjoying the discussion around the table and how far we've come as a council uh, on this. I I want to uh, extend my appreciation to uh, Counselor Carr and and Counselor Brown for working out this compromise on our behalf. Uh, at first it was uh, uh, felt like, okay, let's hold our nose and and vote for this, because I can see where both sides are coming together here. But the more I'm hearing about this motion and reading into it, I'm sorry, uh, the more I'm uh, learning of it, the better I like the motion. I did uh, for the record, support uh, Counselor Clark's uh, motion, because I I'm concerned with the timing of uh, this today. Sorry, I gotta take a little drink here. I was concerned with the timing, because as Counselor Lulov so aptly put there, uh, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. But that's okay. We're going to figure our way through this in the fall, so I I appreciate the support of council. And uh, I'm hoping that staff are going to give us a very comprehensive report in the fall. So that we can figure out how what we decide today will fit into that long-term strategy and what we have to do to get from here to there. I think we need to ramp up our discussion after today. I I again, with Counselor Lulov, I agree, this discussion doesn't end today. It just starts. For the new councils around the table, I'm going to make a prediction, you're going to spend a lot of time talking about garbage to your residents this summer. It's, they're not going to stop. Counselor DeRosa and I have been talking about how we were here when they went from one week to two weeks. He supported it. I didn't. I'm proud of that. He's proud of his vote. But people never stop talking to us about that. And uh, the dumping that uh, Counselor Brockington's talking about, and we're all experiencing it, whether we like it or not. To me, that's a silent protest going back that far. So uh, as I mentioned, I think we have to ramp up the discussion on diversion. That's what I'm picking out of everybody's comments, and I'm hearing really good things. And Counselor Clark brought up about multi-res units. What are we going to do about that? Uh, I know I've seen some interesting technology personally to address that. I forwarded, as I do with anything that's any good, to uh, Shelley and her team to review. So I hope we're going to hear more about that, because that's the key to success, that we can get. Uh, the multi-res units involved in the actual diversion of things. Counselor Minard earlier mentioned about mattresses going to the landfill, taking up a lot of space in landfill. We know we have a local company that recycles these mattresses and and repurposes what's included in there. Why is that stuff still sitting in trail road? Why can't we step in right away and work out something to divert that? We don't need four years to study that. I'd like to see a plan in the fall to have those mattresses diverted from trail road as soon as possible. Same thing applies to the construction waste that we heard about today, too. If we really are worried about the landfill, which I hope we all are, those kinds of steps need to be taken right away. Stop with, we're going to study it for years. Make a move to get this done. It should be the priority, not just of our environment committee, but also the whole council to get these things fixed. That's how we're going to keep costs low for residents. The uh, something as simple as getting pet waste out of our uh, city parks and and garbage cans, which then go to trail road. Something as simple as addressing that, here it is almost the end of June, and we can't do anything about it. It's been years we've been talking about it, since somebody mentioned earlier about the changes we made to the green bin program to allow plastic in there. I think it was Counselor DeRosa brought that up. That we expected to see a nice big bounce in green bin there, and he's right, we're not communicating that out enough. I get that staffer, and this is going to be my first question to staff. I get that it's part of your communications plan. When is it part of your communications plan? When are we going to see information about that that will go out to our residents that we as counselors can promote? Because uh, there's really uh, no excuse for somebody to not use their green bin now that we allow them to put it in the plastic bag. As he said, the leftover bread bag, whatever you want, and put that stuff in your green bin. When are we going to see that information come out this year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so I'll start, and then I'll hand it over to my my colleague Andrea. As part of uh, information that's communicated out through the Recollect and and the Waste Explorer app, there are reminders for residents. As well as we do offer now currently different programs or campaigns uh, in order to promote uh, different pieces. Certainly what we're hearing here today, uh, wanting to ensure that some of the the good things that are taking place, that we are promoting that. So that residents do understand and and take advantage. So I'll just hand it over to Andrea in order to speak more on a communication opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Shirley. Through the chair, we will be continuing the communications, particularly after this conversation. We are listening very carefully to what members of council are saying. Um, as part of this program, there is funding to support communication, so we will be taking that, using that and continuing the work that was started in twenty twenty. Um, there was an initial campaign back in twenty twenty pertaining to the the plastic. Unfortunately, of course, we were uh, hit by a pandemic in that time, which uh, which impacted uh, probably the the permeation. We did do some market research after the twenty twenty to see if people were aware of the, yes, I'm behind you. To see if people were aware of the um, of the ads, and about fifty percent a year and a half after the ads campaign. Remembered it, which is good for a year and a half after the campaign, but we do need to continue this to the point of members of council. We need to continue to communicate this to residents, um, to eliminate even further that yuck factor, as it's called.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, can we get that in as a direction to staff to provide council with that information? I know there is a really good pamphlet out there about what goes in the bin, as one example. I'd like to see that get circulated to all of council if possible, so we can help promote. My last comment, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate a couple of extra seconds on this. Uh, I just have one question, and that's the impact on the pickup service. We're talking, you know, uh, if if we choose to support Counselor Divine's motion and go with the tags. Have we looked at the amount of uh, time it's going to take the garbage people that pick up our garbage? What's the impact on them getting their route done? And if we don't go with tags, but we go with the weight of the bags, who's weighing that bag? Is it the guy with the truck has a scale on the side, or are we expecting residents to weigh? Thank you. That's my last question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just step in on on one of the first questions related to the communication piece. One thing that I can assure council is regardless of what uh, option is selected. Um, you have our commitment that basically there will be a solid communication and engagement plan on what we're rolling out. Because one of the piece that both motions are trying to get to is basically. Increase residents' awareness around the importance of diverting their waste. Uh, cost savings opportunities around the recycling piece, why it's important to divert organic. So it's it's one of the area that we we appreciate that regardless of the outcome that we're, that council is going to be voting on. That will be a focal point uh, moving forward to make sure that we get as much success as we can out of. Regardless of the options that are being uh, are being retained. So that is definitely our commitment to you, Counselor.
Okay, and then a quick answer to that question, please. Thanks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so the current definition of an item as as well as the weight isn't changing uh, through these motions. And currently our operators, it it is by, they're they're quite strong, and uh, and and it is by their their take on whether or not something is too heavy. So certainly there won't be weighing the the material currently. Um, when we were looking through these options, like in in consideration, the curbside diversion policy piece. We did engage with our current collectors in order to speak with them, in order to understand what concerns they would have, depending on the approach that that was raised. And regardless of the option that that we chose, so reducing the number of items, well, they're going to be at each stop for a shorter period of time, which is a benefit. Um, and if now they're they're kind of confirming whether there's a a tag or they're counting the number of items, that time will be what they would have been using in order to load up to six items. Uh, so not seeing any changes from our current collection operators uh, with either motion that's presented today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hubley. Counselor King.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I think it's evident uh, from the debate today uh, that we've reached an inflection point. The city of Ottawa must continue to seek changes to its residential waste collection to reduce garbage tonnage and increase waste diversion. The city has allowed an unenforced limit of six garbage items since two thousand and seven, which is not sustainable. Based upon the city's landfill capacity and provincial policy. For over a decade, the implementation of the green bin program and shift to biweekly garbage collection has only resulted in a twelve percent increase in waste diversion. To encourage residents to make full use of diversion programs, an adjustment of the max maximum number of garbage items permitted at the curb will be necessary. The province has set a seventy percent reduction and recovery target for food and organic waste for municipalities by the end of this year. The province also has set a target for phasing out all food and organic waste from landfills by twenty thirty. To achieve these targets, fifty-eight percent of waste needs to be diverted to recycling programs. For us to reach these ambitious goals, we must adopt a new residential curbside waste policy. This is why I will vote in favor of any initiative that reduces the amount of waste that is picked up curbside. Overall, reducing the amount of residential waste being picked up in Ottawa is key to promoting sustainable waste management practices, increasing recycling and composting. Encouraging methods to reduce waste generation and encouraging a more environmentally conscious city. By reducing the amount of residential garbage generated, our city improves its environmental conservation efforts. Less waste means fewer resources consumed in the production, transportation, and disposal of garbage. It helps conserve natural resources, reduces uh, energy consumption, and minimizes pollution associated with waste management. When Ottawa residents are more conscious of their waste production, and I feel that they are now with this debate, this ongoing debate. They are more likely to separate recyclable materials and organic waste from the general trash. This promotes sustainable practices and extends the life of landfills by diverting materials from disposal. Reducing the amount of residential garbage being picked up will ultimately lead to reductions in waste management costs. We know that the city saves between one point one to three million uh, for each year the landfill is extended. And we heard that from from staff today. While the city is exploring long-term options ranging from citing a new landfill to leveraging new technologies. Such options, as we know, will cost in the range of three hundred and fifty to four hundred million, and will take ten to fifteen years to cite, construct, and operate. This is why changes to our curbside collection policy are critical. By reducing the amount of waste being picked up, we can free up funds that can be allocated to other essential infrastructure improvements. We also foster a culture of sustainability and responsible consumption amongst our residents. It encourages individuals to be mindful of their waste generation and seek alternative ways to reduce, reuse, and recycle. This shift in behavior will have long-term benefits for the environment and creates a more sustainable future. To assist this adjustment, I will reintroduce a motion with Counselor Johnson. That previously obtained unanimous approval at Environment and Climate Change Committee to provide enhanced education to residents. About the changes to the city's curbside waste collection policy and to encourage city staff to under- and to encourage city staff to undertake a more robust campaign concerning waste diversion. City staff did indicate at committee that they would examine the unique requirements of both large households and low-income residents, which is welcome. As we move forward as a city, it will be essential that we actively work to reduce residential waste to demonstrate our commitment to environmental stewardship. This will be essential if we are ultimately intent on achieving a zero-waste Ottawa through progressive collective and innovative action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor King, councillor Leeper.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know many of you read, uh, the post that I put up last night and I don't want to revisit that ground. Uh, but I do want to say that with the three-bag, no-tag limit, I'm convinced that there is going to be a very significant amount of otherwise diverted waste in those bags. If it's simply putting out three bags, which most people, uh, are able to stick to in terms of a limit, there's nothing to require folks to bring more of the, uh, divertable material out of that. There isn't a nudge, there isn't what councillor Johnson, I think, referred to as that moment of choice, when you have to think about what you're throwing out. And while I appreciate councillor Kits's optimism, I do believe that without that nudge, without that moment of choice, attitudes are going to be very slow to change. And that we are going to fall prey to our bias in favor of convenience and ease every time. The three-bag limit does represent for the first time a hard and fast rule on how much garbage you can throw out. And that's, that's not nothing. But it is, as councillor Brown pointed out at the outset of this, uh, debate, the, the most modest step we can take. The issue of curbside waste is intimately tied up with environmental and economic sustainability issues in this city. And I feel like we're being driven in this debate by the voices who are loudest in favor of the status quo. The, I'm going to ask councillors to think about the younger residents in their wards when they're voting today, who may not be writing to us, who may not be trying to, um, defend that status quo and who want us to do better. They're not going to be asked to deal with a little bit of inconvenience if this council doesn't get environmental and economic questions right. Years from now, they're going to be dealing with far more serious consequences based on the decisions that we have to make today. Younger residents in Ottawa are watching and they want us to do better and to be bolder. We're all agreed, or many of us are agreed, I think, that the motion that the mayor's office has helped stick handle, that's being brought by councillors, uh, Brown and Carr, is, is a compromise to which we can all agree. But before you vote on that, we're going to have the opportunity to vote on councillor Divine's motion. You're going to have the opportunity to be bold. You're going to have the opportunity to tell those who are arguing for greater environmental and economic sustainability in this city, that you've heard them and that you are going to try to do better than the status quo. When councillor Divine's motion comes up, be bold, vote for it. If it doesn't pass, I like the rest of you, I'm going to, or like many of the rest of you, I'm going to be pragmatic and I'm going to support that motion, uh, that has been brought by, uh, Brown and Carr. But we can be significantly bolder, uh, with that as a backup. Please, I urge everyone, uh, be brave today and, and vote for councillor Divine's motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Leeper. Um, so I'll give councillor Divine and then councillor Brown an opportunity to provide some closing comments and then. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And I think, uh, I think councillor Brown and I are both going to, because we're competing motions, I think we're both going to be asking some questions, which is fine with me. Um, so to, uh, to the movers of the three-bag limit, uh, to my, to my colleague councillor Carr, it is my absolute pleasure to flatter you with imitation as you, as you shed because although you are now seeing your, your motion a different light, I am not. I still believe in the original motion you put out last week. Um, and of course, any concern that, that you expressed over the possibility of people being able to purchase an unlimited amount of bag tags in the Brown-Carr motion, that, that possibility exists inherently as well with the possibility of buying as many, um, yellow tags and more and more to me over the course of this debate, it does, and the conversation, it does seem like inherently the, the bag tags and the yellow tags are essentially serving the same purpose. Um, and to my colleague councillor Brown, um, as I have said to you a couple of times, it has been a real joy doing battle with you over the past weeks. Um, uh, you, you really, uh, are a, a kind chap to deal with, I appreciate that. Um, councillor Leeper hit the nail on the head just a minute ago when he said that by, by passing the three-bag item limit, by granting permission to all of Ottawa to put out three items of garbage, by granting social license to put out more than the current average of 2.1 items, my genuine fear with the three-bag limit, and I'll be, I'll speak about this in a little bit later, depending on how things go. My genuine fear is that we're going to start to see an average set-out rate of more than 2.1. My genuine fear is that among those 74% of people who are keeping it at 2.1, they're going to be granted social license to, to, to do less. And so I fear that we may end up with a, with an unfortunate outcome here. Um, to speak to the, the Brown-Carr motion itself, um, I just want to touch on a little bit on the yellow bag things because I'm still quite, quite confused about that. In the original four-bag motion, uh, there was concern for the affordability concerns on large families, families that might be putting out four or more items. And I do want to zero in on that a little because I think there is value to being concerned about affordability. As I understand it, in the Brown-Carr motion, the flexibility built into the motion is the possible incorporation of the yellow bag proposal pending a successful exploration of its feasibility. We are in a little bit of uncharted waters, we don't know where that exploration will go, but pending its, uh, its success. Now councillor Gower was speaking about residents having the option of driving their fourth bag of garbage out to trail. So, uh, question to staff, if I am taking my fourth item, uh, to trail, if I'm taking a 33-pound can of trash to trail, um, how much might it cost me for, for that tipping fee?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so the tipping fee is a currently $130 per tonne. So just quick math, that would be about $4.50 for a 33-pound item.
$4.50?
Correct.
Okay, so I drive my fourth bag out to, out because, you know, I didn't want to buy a yellow tag. It's going to cost me $4.50 to do that to tip it. Then, of course, I'm going to pay for the gas to go there, my time or that family's time is of value as well. Um, if I choose not to spend that much money going that way, if I choose to purchase the yellow bags, I think you said earlier, it'll be about $17.20 for four bags compared to $12 for four tags. So it does start to sound like whether, if I am that large family wondering what to do with my fourth bag, it does start to sound like whether I choose the trail route or if I choose buying the yellow tags route, things are getting more and more expensive from a consumer point of view for those families. Uh, that is a concern of mine, but affordability isn't my only concern here. There is the impact on the environment. Um, can you clarify which proposal, the three bags with yellow, the three bags firm limit with yellow bags or the two bags plus tags, which will bring us closer to our waste diversion targets, which I hope we're still aiming to support?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so that would be the, the lower limit of bringing us at or below the average set-out based on industry best practice.
Thank you. Um, and would that also therefore mean that, uh, the three bags firm limit would make it harder for us to reach our provincially mandated obligations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so currently 85% of households are setting out three or more items, whereas compared to, uh, 74% are setting out two or less. So based on that, it's, we do anticipate that we will, we will progress with the either or. Um, but that we will likely not achieve as high diversion rates as well as waste reduction with a three-item limit compared to a two-item limit.
Okay, thank you. Um, so to, uh, to, to reinforce, uh, what councillor Leeper was saying when he was referencing, I was saying about being bold. It does now seem, and I might, I may be wrong, it does now seem like all we're really choosing is between a, a three-item limit or a two-item limit with something that rhymes with eggs. Um, whether that be bags or yellow tags. So i- i- it, I really do, in consideration of all, uh, that is at stake here, not just for now, but for tomorrow and for 10 years from now and 15 and 20 years from now. Uh, this is, as somebody else said, this is a lose, lose, lose no matter what. No matter what we do today, even if we defer, we're going to be upsetting a great number of people. Um, if we're going to lose, I'd rather we lose big and bold, uh, and do what I think inarguably is best for the future of the city. Oh, my time's up, thanks.
Yep. All right, thank you councillor Divine, councillor Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you to my colleague across the way. Uh, it, it's been a great experience and, and one that I think I've shared with many around the table. Uh, councillor Carr, I, I could never match your passion, but certainly I don't ever want to end up on the wrong side of an issue with you. Um, it truly has been a collaborative effort and there's nothing, uh, about either proposal that doesn't ask residents to do better. Right now, we're going from the Wild West of anything goes, put out as much as you want, to a limit. I'm very concerned about illegal dumping and, uh, I, I'm sitting between two poets today. Councillor Kits, as she does, always encapsulates the rural perspective so well. And, uh, to my left councillor Doros, who, uh, talked about urban loads on rural roads. And it's certainly going to be rural Ottawa that ends up dealing with any change that happens. Uh, Mr. Mayor, your office has been extremely helpful in bringing us together around the table. And I think that's what taxpayers expect. They want to see all of us come together and find a compromise that'll work for the majority. And I think that's what we have with the motion put forward by councillor Carr and myself. When we're looking at, uh, diversion, you know, we all want to see less go to the landfill. I, I am certainly thinking more than most as the landfill's in my ward. This is a, a key topic for residents in my ward and they want to see it addressed. What we don't want to do though is punish residents for living in the city of Ottawa, which is why the compromise motion put forward by councillor Carr and myself enjoy, uh, I, I hope would enjoy the support of the majority of residents in Ottawa because it ensures that they can continue to live while doing better, but that the built-in flexibility is there to ensure that if they do have a party, say a birthday party, nothing says happy birthday, like take your garbage home with you. We, we don't want to see that and I think we'd see a lot of that waste end up in the rural side ditches, uh, roadside ditches rather. Uh, I would ask, uh, clarification from staff on the yellow bag program. If we're looking to leverage that and bring it in to more of the residential side, is there a possibility that because residents are already paying a portion of the solid waste to cost on their property taxes, that perhaps a leveraged yellow bag program for residences could be lower than the current 100% cost recovery model that exists today?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll start that and Isabel, if you want to add or Shelley, anything onto it. Um, so certainly there, there is an opportunity for us to look at it because it is currently priced based on the fact that businesses do not pay a solid waste user fee. We can assess the opportunity to understand the cost recovery for, from a residential perspective, taking into consideration that there already is a user fee that's being paid.
Yeah, I can just say that the, the garbage fee is based on a cost recovery. So it would only be as high as we need to cut, recover the costs. Thank you very much for that clarification and I think that's important because we're looking at ensuring that residents can afford to live in Ottawa and that Ottawa is a place that you'd want to raise your family. Um, I also want to say that the, the motion put forward by councillor Carr and myself has a very important accommodation for agricultural operations. We don't want to punish those who grow our food right here in Ottawa. And as you've heard me say before, Ottawa is an agricultural city. 80% of the landmass within our, our municipal boundaries is in one of the four rural wards. So I think it's important that we recognize that there's a, a very select group of folks that, uh, we should look after, that we want to support and we always want to support, uh, local food, uh, production here in Ottawa. Mr. Mayor, I, I think it's important again to recognize that we're talking about items. And I know it's a slip of the tongue and I've caught myself earlier this week saying it, but we're not talking about garbage bags, we're talking about items. And that's a very important distinction and I hope the media will pick up on that. We're not looking to change the definition that's already in the solid waste by law. We're just looking to ensure that when we're having this conversation, we're using the correct terminology. So we have a firm grasp of what we're actually talking about. And I think that's important to, uh, recognize going forward. I hope that's highlighted in the educational, uh, component of whatever motion ends up coming forward. I, I think that's very important that that distinction is made, it's items, not bags. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate the opportunity to ask a few questions and, and wrap up. Uh, colleagues, I would encourage you to support the motion put forward by councillor Carr and myself. I think it hits all the important points, it moves us forward. It ensures that we start recognizing that diversion is important, but that we encourage residents and families to continue to be able to live in Ottawa without being punished to do so. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you councillor Brown. Um, I'll just offer a few quick comments myself before we vote on the couns, on councillor Divine's motion. Um, I do want to take the opportunity to, uh, acknowledge the cooperation from members of council on what has been a, a challenging at times discussion, but I think a very productive conversation around how we manage this file going forward. I've heard over and over again, uh, throughout the last year from residents of the city that they expect their elected officials to work together collaboratively and cooperatively to achieve consensus on important issues, to ensure that the needs and concerns of the entire city, the rural, suburban and urban parts of the city are heard and respected. And I think that's what we've done over the last 10 days. Uh, after the committee meeting last week, I thought it was important to connect with the two councillors who moved the two key motions at the committee meeting and find a way to work together on a solution. And so I want to thank councillor Carr and I want to thank councillor Brown for their collaboration and for approaching those discussions with an open mind. I also want to thank councillor Dudas, councillor Kits and councillor Curry for their contributions to that dialogue. It was a very productive, uh, conversation. And I want to acknowledge as well councillor Menard, the Chair of the Environment Committee, with whom I've had multiple conversations over the past week as we've moved this, uh, moved this along. And I want to thank all councillors today for, uh, your questions and your, your comments and your contributions to this discussion. I think it's very healthy for residents of our city to see us discussing this issue at this level and, and getting into, uh, the details of how this is going to work going forward. And I do want to acknowledge the hard work of staff on this issue. Uh, this, this issue is of course only one piece of our overall solid waste master plan, which council will consider later this year. So I want to say thank you to Shelley, Nicole, Andrea, Alain and all of your teams, uh, for the many, many hours that you've put into this. And also you've done a great job today answering questions at, at this council meeting, so thank you for that. As you all know, this is just the beginning. As other people have noted, there are still a number of important steps ahead in this discussion. In addition to what we decide today, we'll be taking steps to reduce waste from, uh, multi-residential buildings. And we'll be having very, very important conversations about developing long-term solutions for disposing of our waste in Ottawa. I believe through collaboration and cooperation, we've arrived at a solution that takes an important step forward. May not go as far as some people want, but it is still a big step forward. It will extend the life of our landfill by increasing waste diversion. We will be collecting more data going forward to ensure that we are indeed diverting more waste and that we can act on the information that we have. And all of our options remain open in the future about what we might have to do to divert waste, to, uh, increase diversion, to divert more waste going forward. And let's be clear, diversion from landfill is not only better for the environment, but it saves money for taxpayers. The more we put into the blue bin and the black bin, the more we put into the green bin, the less we will pay as taxpayers going forward for the collecting and disposing of garbage. So that's an important part of, uh, an important consideration as well. So again, I'm glad to see the level of cooperation that went into this outcome and I'm grateful to my colleagues for their hard work on this. I think that is what residents expect of us. And so let's keep moving forward and keep working together in a collaborative fashion on these issues. So with that, uh, let's vote on councillor Divine's motion first, please.
Councillor Carr. No. Councillor Curry. No. Councillor Bradley. Yes. Councillor DeRus. Councillor Kelly.
No.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Lowe.
No.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Luloff.
Boldly, no.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Conseilleur Plant. Councillor Traster.
Yes.
Councillor Divine.
More boldly, yes.
Councillor Kits.
No.
Councillor Hill.
No.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Leeper.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Brown.
No.
No.
Councillor Daras.
No.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
No.
Ten yeas, fourteen nays.
Okay, thank you. So let's move to the Brown-Carr motion, and I know there is a proposed amendment to that motion from councillor Divine, so we will address that first. If you'd like to introduce that, councillor Divine.
Thank you, Chair. So I think people might not be familiar with this motion, so I will read this one as opposed to my other one. So whereas the proposed three-item limit is above the current household average set-out rate for curbside garbage collection, and whereas industry best practices show that to be effective in aiding waste diversion efforts, the item limit should be set at or below the current household average. And whereas behavioral research indicates that setting the rate above the current household average may in fact increase the amount of garbage going to landfill. And whereas the city of Ottawa has an obligation under provincial regulations to meet specified waste diversion targets, therefore be it resolved that recommendation one include a firm commitment to analyze, using a variety of metrics, the impact of the three-item policy during its first year of implementation, not only on waste diversion rates, but also, one, waste set-out rates, two, the total per capita of reduced waste going to landfill, and three, illegal dumping. So colleagues, in my original proposal, thanks to the input, and thank you to my secondary councillor Bradley, there had been a request to speed up the implementation of the speed of the three-bag limit, because after speaking to staff, they confirmed that they could easily launch the program sooner than the timeline required for bags and tags. I understand that there is a lot of resistance to a quicker implementation from some councillors, and so with apology to my secondary, I have removed that clause, but I certainly do encourage and urge staff to prepare for an implementation and education component as soon as possible. So my concern with the Brown-Carr motion, which I will be supporting, is with the last be it resolved clause of that motion, the end of that paragraph requests that staff provide ongoing reporting on diversion efforts, including green, blue, and black bin waste composition and effectiveness of diversion through these programs once the bag limit is implemented. So what I'm concerned about, and it's a bit of a nuance, but an important one, what I'm concerned is what won't be reported and what therefore won't be analyzed. I think it's great that we'll be getting information on the effectiveness of this policy on diversion rates, but what we also need to collect and analyze is this policy's effectiveness on average household set-out rates and the total per capita of reduced waste going to landfill. Because currently, the average set-out rate per household is 2.1 items, and we know that in that 50% of waste could be diverted. And so if we only study and report on the diversion rate, it doesn't fundamentally matter if we're improving our diversion rate by a few percent if at the same time we're increasing our set-out rate. If we end up going from 2.1 bags per household to 3.5 bags, then the potential increase of diversion isn't the only thing that we should be concerned about. So basically, in my proposed amendment, all I'm really looking for is that we gather and analyze as much useful information as we can, so that several few years from now, if and when we have to make another decision, we have better data on that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Divine. I just want to ask staff before we get to councillors' questions and comments, but is this motion redundant? Are we not already collecting this data and reporting back on it?
Mr. Mayor, there's already a lot of data that we're collecting or reporting on, and I think one of the important points is even if some of the motions are specific around certain types of data that they want to see coming back, our commitment is that basically whatever data that is available that will help council to make an informed decision will be part of that package. So we're not going to just limit ourselves to what councils identified, especially we're going to also supplement that with any other data that may be helpful to the decision-making process.
Okay, so whether this motion passes or not, you're going to be providing us with this information, is that right?
We will. This just helps to reinforce the expectation from council around the type of information to come back to them.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brockington?
Thanks, Mayor. The whereas statements of this motion impart that the current average of garbage items is 2.1 when we currently have a cap of six. And what the motion is stating is if you lower that cap to three, if we lower the cap to three, that average is now going to go up. Third whereas statement. Can you comment if that's true, please?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, in terms of the experience that we've seen through our municipal scan and through some of the industry best practices, we do anticipate that there will be behavior change and coupled with that education as well as enforcement. So we do anticipate that there will be a reduction in setups.
Okay, that's very important because right now residents can put up to six items, which is not even enforced. I have the emails I've got talk about students living in-house every weekend. There's 16 bags, people who are renovators, industrial waste by the oodles on the curb. But I don't subscribe or I don't buy into the fact that if the cap is going from six to three, people are all going to send, say, fantastic. I normally put out 2.1 bags a week, and now I can go up to three, and now all of a sudden we're going to start generating more garbage. I don't see that happening. So I wanted to raise that. The other thing is, to the mayor's question, the three components that we would like to see studied, waste set-out rates, the total per capita of reduced waste going to the landfill, and illegal dumping. The first two, waste set-out rates and total per capita of reduced waste going in the landfill, can you just explain as, I mean, no year is the same. You're not comparing apples to apple. The population of the city increases by 12,000 people per year. I understand the per capita metric, but can you just explain how you measure that and the type of data that we can actually procure from this motion?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I think councillor, the first piece in terms of the set-out study, that's where the intent would be that following policy implementation or a year after, we would update that study. So essentially, that's going out, and it's taking account of how many bags of garbage, the set-out as your green bin, as well as the leaving yard waste, as well as blue and black bin in terms of the the per capita. So we do have annual reporting on our tonnages, but we also have our population data, so that allows us to take a look at that per capita. And then, of course, we also do have our updated waste audit studies, which look at the actual characterization of the waste. So what is physically in the garbage bag that can be or should be either diverted through the green bin as well as through the blue and black bin.
Okay, excellent. Absolutely, we need metrics. Support that data collection. The general manager confirmed we're going to do it anyway or are doing it anyway. So I will support the motion for us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Curry?
Mr. Mayor, just my general comment on things like this. So I understand staff are saying, well, we would be doing this anyways, right? So really, there's no need for this motion. But there's never a costing for these things. You know, these motions just come out and they say, oh, also, can you do this, that, and the other? And nobody really knows what that costs in terms of hard dollars. They're saying, oh, well, we already do it. Well, really? Because when councillor Hubley was commenting on what does it mean to put a sticker on to say, oh, sorry, you know, oops, you put out too much garbage? That's a time component of how much more time it takes for people to pick up the garbage and put a sticker and all the rest of it. And then that translates into money, and we never get costings for these things. These motions just come out, oh, I think this is good, and it looks good, and it sounds good, but there's never actually dollars attached. I feel like we should have some kind of minimum understanding among us that if you're going to come up with something at last minute, you should have a general understanding of what it's going to cost. And I heard what staff said, that they're going to do this anyways. I'm just saying, in general, I'm going to have to believe that, yeah, we're doing this anyways. This will come at zero extra cost. Nothing more is added here to do this, but I would like confirmation on that first, and then I'd like people to think about that going forward before you bring forward a motion without any real idea of how much it would cost.
Mr. Mayor, I can confirm, and I appreciate your point. My comment was in reference to the additional data that was being requested as part of the motion. And because this is already information that we do collect and we have, there's really not an incremental cost to report on that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Curry. Councillor Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I do appreciate the collaboration across the way, but I would say that, as we've heard from staff, there's really no need for this motion in terms of the additional reporting piece that's going to be covered. Staff are going to be doing this work, so I'm not supportive. But the other piece to this here about expediting the implementation line, I don't think we need to do that. We need to communicate. The timeline in the motion before us I think is appropriate to communicate to residents the changes that are coming, and I wouldn't want to see us lose out on some of that time. So colleagues, I would encourage you to vote no against this amendment.
Just point of order. I've already removed the element of the implementation. It shouldn't be taken into consideration for the voting on the motion. It's no longer there.
I apologize. I guess I'm reading an old copy. So colleagues, I guess my comment stands. I don't think we need to approve this motion. Staff are already doing the work that is being requested here, and I think we should vote this down and move on to the motion before us. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Menard?
Thanks very much, Mayor. Just a couple of questions to staff on this. So on the original Brown-Carr motion, it speaks to implementation as quickly, I guess as quickly as possible prior to Q2 2024. So just in terms of your own ability to implement the program, I take it you'll come back to council as soon as you're ready, which could be much earlier. That could be Q1, could be Q4, end of this year. You'll come back when you're ready. Can you just confirm if that's the case?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct, councillor. So our original plan was to report back to council Q1. Given, depending on the outcome of today's discussion and council's decision, we may be able to advance that to the end of Q4. However, recognizing that two pieces, that we will still want to preserve and ensure that robust lead-up to the communications and education campaign, but also there are some budget implications that will require budget requests through the 2024 budget process.
Perfect. That's helpful information. On the councillor Divine motion, I think it's speaking to the issues that were raised around the table when the initial proposal was put in place, right? So the councillor's asking for an update on, and I guess focusing the council on illegal dumping, on the total cap per capita of reduced waste going to landfill and the waste set-out rate. So I know staff will look at these, but to put a particular point on it, I think councillors have been doing that in the media to this point anyway, right? We've been talking about these issues. So I understand that, you know, the point that we're making here, which is yes, staff are going to do some investigation, but this exactly speaks to the issues that councillors are raising in the media. And I think it makes sense for us to continue that dialogue now with staff so that that report back happens in that first, in that first year of implementation. I think I've got a direction that talks about the full program review in 2027, and so that's next term of council. In the interim, we obviously want to monitor our decisions, right? We have accountability here to the public, and that's what this is. So appreciate that, and staff's work on this.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Councillor Luloff?
So just a question to staff then. So if we vote no on this motion, it's going to happen, and if we vote yes on this motion, it's going to happen, correct?
Correct.
So if we vote no, it's going to happen, and if we vote yes, it's going to happen. So can I ask that the mover withdraw the motion so that we can just vote on it? Because it's going to happen anyway. The thing that you're asking today is it's going to happen whether we vote yes or no. So this is, you know, it's a waste. It's a waste of time that we're discussing this right now.
If it's going to happen regardless or not, then I think it's worth having the vote to see if people want to. I mean, just so you know, I had this dialogue with staff. This was, this motion has been the result of several conversations with staff where they wanted to ensure that this information is being recorded. But so question to staff. This I beg your pardon, sir. I beg your pardon. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll wrap up on this, and it's going to happen whether or not we vote on this. This is a giant waste of our time right now. We should get to the matter here. Thanks.
Okay, let's vote then on the, on the proposed amendment. Go ahead, please. We'll have a recorded vote on the amendment.
Councillor Carr.
No.
Councillor Curry.
No.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor Daruz. Councillor Kelly.
No.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Low.
No.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Luloff.
No.
Councillor Gower.
No.
Conseilleur Plante.
No.
Councillor Troster.
Yes.
Councillor Divine.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
No.
Councillor Hill.
No.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Brown.
No.
Councillor Daras.
No.
Mayor Sutcliffe?
No.
Nine yeas, fifteen nays.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's, okay. Order, please. Let's move to the vote then on the motion from councillor Brown, seconded by councillor Carr. Yeah, yeas and nays, please.
Councillor Carr.
Yes.
Councillor Curry.
Yes.
Councillor Bradley.
No.
Councillor Daruz. Councillor Kelly.
No.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Low.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Luloff.
Less boldly, yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Conseilleur Plante.
Oui.
Councillor Troster.
Yes.
Councillor Divine.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Brown.
Yes.
Councillor Daras.
Oui.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Yes.
Twenty-two yeas, two nays.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So next, we have a motion from councillor King, seconded by councillor Johnson regarding an education plan. If you'd like to introduce that motion, councillor King.
Thank you, your worship. This is a motion around an education plan as part of the implementation plan, and this was a motion that was approved by Environment and Climate Change Committee during our previous deliberations. Therefore, be it resolved that the implementation plan incorporate an education plan for residents that includes, A, identifying barriers and challenges under our current system and target the communication plan to address these concerns and encourage positive participation in the new curbside waste diversion program; B, developing a response plan for illegal dumping specifically around high-rise buildings, low-income neighborhoods, and areas that are known for large garbage items to be placed on curbs and next to buildings; C, ensure the targeted communication campaigns include opportunities for residents to participate in waste audits and explore opportunities to expand the educational campaigns to schools and community housing; D, ensure that the one-time capital ask of $3.5 million in 2024 funded from the reserve focus on education and outreach first in communities where there is currently a lower participation in the curbside waste diversion program; and E, that as part of the implementation planning, staff develop a set of proposed metrics to assess enhanced outreach performance in communities with lower diversion rates as part of the implementation and readiness update report in Q1 2024 prior to launch; and F, as part of staff's report back to council on the policy changes that staff report back on performance metrics assessing the effects of enhanced outreach efforts in communities with lower diversion rates. And I'd like to once again thank councillor Johnson for the collaboration on this item as well as councillor Kavanaugh. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillor Curry?
Mr. Mayor, so part D, I agree with all the education part. Part D, 3.5 million? That was part of the original staff recommendation, right? So, we're not there right now. So, what does that mean then to staff? The 3.5 is not a part of what we've done right now.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's part of the, and I'm looking at Caitlin for confirmation, but it's part of the existing recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I may ask the general manager of corporate services to confirm. But my understanding is that staff will still be putting forward a capital budget ask in 2024, which mayor may not be that specific amount, depending on, based on what council has decided today.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I can confirm that, that this will be part of our normal 2024 annual budget process that we'll revisit and ensure that the right funding is in place for this perspective and this project.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, so the 3.5 has not been approved yet. It's part of 2024, and it may not be. I don't think it will be. But, yeah, like with that in this motion, what does that mean? Is that like a pre-approval already for 3.5 million? What do people think?
I don't think it pre-approved it. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't think it pre-approved it the way I quickly read it right here, having just seen this. But again, it will be part of our normal budget process where we bring forward all the components of a budget. And obviously, if this is a priority, it will be included.
Mr. Mayor, does anybody want to clarify that in that section of it as a friendly amendment, just to make sure it's clear?
Or is there, would removing the actual dollar amount make make a difference on that? I don't know.
I would be amenable to that.
Okay. Okay, so how would that, how would that read then? Just to be clear.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that with that friendly amendment accepted by the mover, subpoint D would refer to ensuring that the one-time capital ask focus on the education would remove the reference to 3.5 million.
Okay.
Lovely. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Okay, is the motion carried?
Carried.
Okay, thank you. Next is a motion from councillor Brockington. Councillor Brockington?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Colleagues, fairly straightforward motion. This is about organic waste ban that the province is mulling. Of all of our diversion streams, we continue to struggle with our organic green bin program. And by no means is organic collection offered across our province by every municipality or region. So, briefly, I'll just read it into the record. Whereas the provincial government has previously indicated their intent to ban organic waste from landfills across Ontario by 2030, whereas diverting as much waste as possible that can be recycled or converted into compost must be maximized in Ottawa and across Ontario. Whereas city staff who participate on the regional Public Works Commissioners of Ontario Solid Waste Working Group, as well as by providing input to AMO, support this direction, whereas advancing the date to prohibit organic waste from landfills would divert more waste sooner and prolong the life of landfills. Therefore, be it resolved that the city, Ottawa City Council endorse the intention of the province to ban organic waste from landfills, and be it further resolved that the mayor write a letter to the, it should say, the Minister of Environment Conservation and Parks in support and requesting that the date of 2030 be advanced. Mayor, just briefly, we're the second-largest city in the province of Ontario. I think it's appropriate for council to say that we endorse the direction that the province is headed. However, a seven-year timeline for me is problematic. And simply, if we're going to write to the minister and indicate our support for the direction the province is headed, that we would prefer to do this before the 2030 timeline. I'd like to thank the seconder of the motion, councillor Menard, Chair of the Environment Climate Change Committee, for his support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Hill, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, my initial response to this would be, you know, this is a piece of the solid waste master plan that speaks to organic waste diversion. It speaks to the provincial policies. But I would suggest that perhaps this is a discussion that would be best held in the fall once we do look at the broader solid waste master plan and how this would fit into that broader piece. So, my initial response would be to defer this to environment committee. Refer this to environment committee. I guess that's my comments. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Brockington? Are you okay with that?
No, it's not considered friendly. I think it's important, given the discussion today about maximizing diversion rates, that we send a signal to the province, and I prefer that council vote on this matter today. If my colleague wants to put his referral motion on the table, then we have to deal with it. But my preference would be to act now instead of discuss later.
Okay.
So, I would move then that we refer this to environment committee.
Okay. I would need a seconder for that, please.
Second, Mayor.
Sorry, so just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, I'm referring it to environment committee for the, as part of the solid waste master plan.
Okay, seconded by councillor Brown. I'll just briefly express, you know, that I don't disagree with the principles behind this. But again, as you know, I'm not a fan of motions that involve writing, me writing letters to provincial government. So, I'll say that every time a motion like this comes up. Okay, so let's vote then on that referral motion, please.
Councillor Carr?
So, we're voting on referring this to the environment committee as part of the solid waste master plan?
No.
Sorry, councillor Carr.
He said no.
Thank you. Councillor Curry?
Yes.
Councillor Bradley?
No.
Councillor DeRusse? Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Low?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
No.
Councillor Luloff?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Councillor Plant?
No.
Councillor Trossard?
No.
Councillor Divine?
No.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley? Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor Menard?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor DeRusse?
Oui.
Mayor Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, eleven nays.
Okay. So, that's referred to the committee. I believe that's all the motions. Councillor Menard, you had a direction?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Worked with staff on this direction, which they've accepted. And it's that staff review and report back to committee and council. This would happen in 2027 on diversion options, including the possibility of introducing clear plastic bags and organics ban if the council-approved curbside diversion policy change falls short of meeting provincial policy targets as part of the proposed full program review in 2027, in which staff will present council with potential amendments and/or further recommendations to enhance curbside waste diversion.
Okay, that's accepted by staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, is there a question? I'm sorry, I wasn't looking. Councillor Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the, to Mr. Councillor Menard for moving this. I, as you heard during my time speaking today, I'm all for increasing diversion and looking at other options. In fact, I wanted us to make that decision today. So be it. I know there's parts of this that I, plus clear bags is not something I'm going to support, but generally, I'm going to support the direction that we look at, at other diversion options. I think that's really important. And I don't necessarily think that asking staff to look into this now is counter to my argument that we should be discussing these things within the solid waste master plan. So, I'm comfortable with this. And I was wondering if staff, because of the discussion that we're having, and we're going to discuss the solid waste master plan this term of council, would you be able to come back sooner than 2027 with these options? Yeah. I don't understand why we'd want to wait longer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, all of these options, so include what was debated and discussed today, as well as the clear bags, were all options that were identified as part of the solid waste master planning process to increase diversion.
But we have 2027 in the direction. I'm just wondering if we could have that before the end of this term.
Just to clarify the question, councillor, the question is asking if we could bring that back before?
Yes.
It is certainly something to consider, a program review before and bringing forward additional options before 2027, if I'm understanding correctly, the question.
Maybe I'll just hand it back over to Sean, I think.
So, staff have already done a lot of work on different diversion options, obviously. This was one of them that they worked on. The point here is the 2027 report-back timeline is in the current schedule for staff to come back with a full review. I see no reason why that information may be presented earlier in that they might present the information. The decision point has been scheduled for 2027. So, my understanding is like, staff have done this. They have a lot of that already.
Sorry, I misunderstood. My apologies. I didn't understand what that meant, so.
Fair enough.
Sorry.
And totally understand the point.
That's it for me.
You know, happy to work with councillors on this, so.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask for yeas and nays on this. I think we're already moving. Council has passed a very large decision today. I'm certainly not supportive of clear bags, and I think most residents aren't. So, if I could ask for yeas and nays on this direction?
That, okay, that effectively turns it into a motion. So, councillor Menard, if you just find a seconder for the motion, please?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, staff have accepted the direction. I don't, like, I can.
Any member of council can ask for yeas and nays, which effectively turns it into a motion instead of a direction, and then we vote on it. So, you just need a seconder for the motion.
I don't know if councillor Kelly wants a second or other councillors. I'll do that.
Okay, seconded by councillor Kelly. Councillor DeRusse?
So, maybe staff can help me. I kind of feel like we're kind of planning the funeral of this initiative here, and the same day we're approving it. I assume you're going to be looking at implementing this and looking at how we can, you know, make the program more of an appeal for the residents, whether that's having more flexibility in the bins that we put out there, whether that be, hey, you want to put stuff in your leaf-in yard waste, which people already do. If they want to put a chicken carcass in the leaf-in yard waste, I guarantee you, we'd pick it up. So, I assume you're going to be looking at the range of sort of options to make diversion much more of an appeal to residents.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor, you're correct. So, through the solid waste master plan or the draft solid waste master plan, that our intent is to be bringing that forward for council's consideration this fall. There will be a number of other diversion options considered. As part of what councillor Menard was mentioning is it's staff's intent to allow the program changes to be implemented, allow some time for change for residents to adapt to those changes, allow for the introduction of, or the full transition to producer responsibility in 2026, allow the introduction of the next collection contract, which will also be introduced in 2026. So, to come back after that point, providing council with an update in terms of how the program or the policy changes are performing in comparison to what we hope to achieve. And as part of that, in doing our due diligence, it would also be presenting a number of different options for council's consideration to further increase or enhance program effectiveness if we're finding we're not quite achieving the goals.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeRusse. Councillor Curry?
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, the wording of this direction is simply that staff come back with options. I could go on ChatGPT and in one millisecond come up with all the other options there are in the world that you can use, which would include tags, all of the things that we've possibly talked about, that we've not gone with right now. We've gone with what we're going with. This is, in fact, a type of threat to people. And if you don't divert now, then we may come up with who knows what. I don't think this is appropriate for right now. And I also, I mean, yes, I could go onto ChatGPT and come up with something in one second, give you a long list of all the options that are used in the world. But staff are planning on doing something quite more than that, as from what I'm listening to right now, that this would be more options and the entire thing that we've just been going through for the past few years to say, what else are we going to do next? I don't think that's something we should be deciding right now. I mean, it may be something we talk about in the solid waste master plan when we get to that at environment committee, but I don't think right now this is a good message to be sending to the community, that we're already looking at a possible threat. I say we just defeat this right now, refer it again to environment committee, something other than having this go forward and fail or pass. When we don't, again, know what the cost of this really is. It's one thing for staff to say, oh, yeah, we can do this. But again, there's no cost. We don't know what that looks like or what that means. This looks like an entirely new review of different options that may be palatable, may not be palatable. What does this really mean, other than a list of options that I could get you in about one second?
Okay, thank you, councillor Curry. Councillor Dudas?
So, to the best of my recollection, we just approved a plan. We just approved a diversion plan, and we have yet to even start it or commence upon it. So, you know, once again, we've heard from staff that they're going to be coming back with all sorts of information and details. My question to staff is, a new term of council would be able to revisit this, would they not? It starts fresh. You can revisit this item or any other item at that juncture?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Yeah, so this is not necessary. And to be honest, I think, as councillor DeRusse so elegantly put it, you know, we're pretty much calling a funeral in advance of even launching the program that we've just endorsed. So, I am going to move that we put the question on the floor. I don't know, Caitlin, is that the correct term to use to now call for the vote? Because that's what I would like to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, go ahead.
A motion to put the question may not be moved by a member who has already spoken on the matter.
Dang.
This rapid.
All right, shucks.
Sure. I just had a quick question before you wrap up, councillor Menard. Is this, does this motion effectively bind the next council after the election? Is that a, is that a consideration?
If I may, Mayor, this council cannot bind the next council in that regard.
But is that effectively what this motion does? Or, so I mean, the next council would just be able to ignore this, is what?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay. So, the next council would have the choice of whether to do this or not? Okay, councillor Menard?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I mean, look, this is pretty simple. Staff are coming back in 2027 anyway for a full program review. That's part of the entire plan that they've put in place. Let's hope to goodness the thing that we just put in place works really, really well. Let's hope it does. I, more than anybody, want it to work because our diversion rates need to improve, so we save ourselves money, and we reduce the amount of things that we're sending to landfill that shouldn't be there. All this is doing is ensuring that those diversion options that we've discussed in the past will come back for that Folsom discussion in 2027. That council can choose to do something different if they like. But the diversion options that staff have put forward, of all of them that are there, there's important pieces that we didn't fully consider today. And I think we, rather than sticking our heads in the sand, rather than sticking our heads in the sand and not having that data in front of us, we have all options, which is what this direction to staff talks about, is all those diversion options there in front of us again, which is coming back anyway. So, I think it's important that we, obviously, this is a staff direction. Let's support our staff. They supported this. Staff have done a lot of work on this already. Let's support them in the work that they've done and the work they're about to do. They've accepted this direction. And let's not bury our heads in the sand about all the options that'll be in front of council when this comes in 2027, regardless of what we just passed. So, I urge you to vote. So I urge you to vote in favor. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, councillor Menard. All right, let's vote on the motion then, please.
Councillor Carr.
Yes.
Councillor Curry.
No.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor De Ruze. Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Lowe.
No.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Luloff.
No.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor Plante.
We.
Councillor Troster.
Yes.
Councillor Divine.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
No.
Councillor Hubley. Councillor Leaper. Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Brown.
No.
Councillor De Roche.
No.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, nine nays.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I think we are done with item eighteen point two. Eighteen point three is the council sponsor group on solid waste. And there is a motion from councillor Menard on that.
Yes, thanks. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This has to do with the councillor sponsors groups appointments. So thank you to the, all the councillors that had put their names forward. We had met and discussed this with regard to people that are not on the committee now that may benefit from these briefings, as a lot of people on committee get those briefings. And so therefore be it resolved is that council appoint the following members of council to the solid waste planning councillor sponsors group, in addition to the chair and vice chair of the Environment Committee and Climate Change and a representative of the mayor's office, councillor Clark Kelly, councillor Glenn Gower and councillor Lee Johnson. Just want to thank everyone else that put their name forward as well. I know we've had good discussions about about that and there's a lot of passion out there about this issue. So, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Menard, councillor Carr.
Hi, I just have a comment on the council, the composition of the council sponsors working group. When the motion, the original motion was passed, I didn't actually back it up because everything in in the terms of reference, it basically said that it would be a representative, an urban councillor, a suburban councillor and a rural councillor. And I'd just like to note that the three representatives now, we don't actually have an urban councillor representative. I'm just noting that fact. In the case of the chair is an urban councillor and the vice chair, I would say I'm partly urban. But I I just wanted to note that if we did want to add a member from the urban area, that that would be could, should be considered, could be considered. Certainly, there's there's things that we will be discussing, multi-residential and other items that are really specific to that urban area. And I would just like to see that reflected. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, councillor Carr. All right, is the is the motion carried? All right, let's move to item. What, sorry. Yeah, sorry, we're carrying the item as amended, just to be clear. All right, carried? Yes. Okay. Let's move to item nineteen point six on the agenda, the Byward Market Strategic Alignment Initiative and Public Realm Plan Update. There are a couple of motions here. First, a technical amendment motion from councillor Kits. Councillor Kits, if you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read it out. Whereas page fifteen of the Finance and Corporate Service Committee's report to council titled Byward Market Strategic Alignment Initiative and Public Realm Plan Update indicates that should a special area levy be appropriate to support the work of the Byward Market District Authority, a community vote would be administered by Elections Ottawa. And whereas the city of Ottawa's election office conducts elections in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act nineteen ninety-six and the Municipal Act two thousand and one, rather than undertaking special area levy votes. And whereas a process will need to be developed to evaluate the city resources and budget required to support any proposed special area levy for the Byward Market District Authority, therefore be it resolved that the report be amended to delete the words and a vote would be held within the community administered by Elections Ottawa. And be it further resolved that recommendation five be revised in accordance with the following. Direct staff to explore in collaboration with the Municipal Services Corporation Board a special area levy to support the mandate of the Byward Market District Authority, including the process by which the support for the special area levy can be assessed. So this just gives staff more flexibility and they are available to speak to it if there are any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions on that? Okay, is the motion carried? All right, and then there is a motion from councillor Tierney as well.
Councillor Tierney. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my secondaire councillor Hubley and I, after speaking with councillor Conseilant, felt it was very important to have specifically her voice on this. And I want to thank the mayor's office for working together again collaboratively to make sure we got to a good point. So it's the world's longest motion, so be prepared, everybody. Whereas Byward Market is an asset of a local and national significance. Whereas Ward twelve has been overwhelmed with both opioid and housing crisis. Whereas the council approved Byward Market District Authority as the custodian and the vision economic prosperity and vibrancy of the historic Bay Ward market districts, as well as the successful Parkdale Market in Ward fifteen. And whereas the council approved the new municipal services corporation governance structure and received information that the proposed recruitment process for the remaining board members at large, whereas the new MSC board will provide strategic direction and establish overall objectives, priorities, benchmarks for the organization, ensuring that the Byward Market District Authority's success and realization of its vision and strategy. Whereas the council is the sole member of the MSC, whereas the board will be comprised of twelve members, including eleven voting members and one non-voting member, whereas the twelfth member of the board to include two permanent general ex officio members, city of Ottawa mayor or mayor designate voting and the general manager of planning real estate and economic development and their designate non-voting. Whereas the initial board will be comprised of two ex officio members, the past chair of the Municipal Services Corporation, the inaugural chair of the Business Advisory Committee and three additional members at large selected by the Transitional Working Group approved by council, whereas the additional three to five members at large will be selected by the new board at a public nominating process approved by council, whereas the board transition priorities will include to finalize new services and asset management agreement with the city, recruiting additional board members, establishing an executive committee structure, developing a new strategic plan and taking steps to evaluate and implement new organizational structures and operating policies. Whereas the MSC reports to the council annually in their annual general meeting get into it, therefore be resolved that the board of governance structures allow for the appointment of a councillor observer to the board of governance structures, be it further resolved that the council observer on the MSC board shall A, be a city councillor from either Ward twelve, Rito Vanier or Ward fifteen, Kichisapi, and B, serve a term of one year alternating annually and C, be able to attend all meetings of the board of directors and relevant subcommittees as an as an ex officio non-voting observer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. Is the motion carried? Okay, and on the committee's recommendations, as amended then, is that carried? Okay. Item twenty-four is the disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority. Is that received? Motion to adopt reports, councillor Dudas.
That the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation entitled OCH Annual Report and Annual General Meeting of the Shareholder, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report four, the Joint Planning and Housing Committee and the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report one, Audit Committee Report two, the Joint Audit Committee and Transit Commission Report one, Built Heritage Committee Report six, Community Services Committee Report three A, Environment and Climate Change Committee Report four, Planning and Housing Committee Report ten, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public submissions for the items subject to the Planning Act explanation requirements at the council meeting of May twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three be received and considered and be received and adopted as amended.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. Is that carried? Motions of which notice has previously been given, councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ambulance motion, I believe. Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to recognize your worship or your leadership on this matter as well. Happy to work with you. And in response to her request from her Excellency, the Ambassador of Ukraine, who made this request through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we have an obligation to consider frankly, the most needy in our society and the people of Ukraine, as we know, with the illegal war and occupation certainly need as much medical assistance in particular. And this ambulance is, I think, the least that we can do. So we do have a process to follow with respect to disposal of certain assets. That's why this motion is before council today, but I strongly support this motion and ask that all members of council provide their support as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington, and thank you for your cooperation on this. Is the motion carried? Okay, motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. I believe we have three of those. And they are all of a time sensitive nature, which is why the rules of procedure need to be suspended. So first is a motion from councillor Troster on Rochester Heights at eight eighteen Gladstone on suspension of the rules. Is that carried?
Carried.
Councillor Troster.
Be it resolved that the rules of procedure be suspended to permit the consideration of the following motion to partly exempt lands at eight eighteen Gladstone from parkland requirements subject to certain conditions. Whereas Ottawa Community Housing is currently seeking approval via site plan application D zero seven twelve twenty-one zero two two one for phase two of their Rochester Heights affordable housing development, which is proposed to be constructed on part of eight hundred and eighteen Gladstone Avenue. And whereas the Corso Italia secondary plan requires that the developer of eight eighteen Gladstone dedicate a total of seventeen hundred square meters of land for parkland. And whereas the secondary plan requirement was calculated on the assumption that future phases of development on eight eighteen Gladstone could include some market rent housing, rate housing. And whereas the Parkland Dedication Bylaw two thousand twenty-two dash two eighty, the Parkland Dedication Bylaw, section fourteen, states that obligations contained in a secondary plan take precedence over the provisions of that bylaw, which would include any exemptions ordinarily attributed to nonprofit housing development. And whereas OCH may proceed to develop phase three with solely with nonprofit housing as defined in the Parkland Dedication Bylaw. And whereas OCH has confirmed that it can dedicate five hundred and eighty square meters of land within phase two without adversely impacting its planned development of nonprofit housing. Whereas it is appropriate to permit permit a lesser dedication obligation, given the proposed change in OCH's plans, but an exemption from the Parkland Dedication Bylaw is required to do so. Therefore, be it resolved the not less standing section fourteen, paragraph one of the Parkland Dedication Bylaw two thousand twenty-two dash two eighty, the following shall apply. Five hundred and eighty square meters of parkland contiguous to the existing Piazza Dante Park shall be converted to the city at the time, sorry, conveyed to the city at the time of development of phase two of the OCH project at eight eighteen Gladstone Avenue. And in the event that any part of phase three is disallowed for any type of development or use other than nonprofit housing or uses or uses ancillary to nonprofit housing on the phase three lands and a man of parkland of up to one thousand one hundred and twenty square meters or cash to lieu shall be identified for such other type of development or use in accordance with the Parkland Dedication Bylaw and conveyed to the city as a condition of development. And be it further resolved that staff be directed in the next omnibus official plan amendment to amend policy five dot four dot nine of the secondary plan. So that the amended policy reads, new public parkland, a minimum of five hundred and eighty meter square shall be provided at eight eighteen Gladstone and the located contiguous I don't even know that word, contiguous with the existing Piazza Dante. Additional public parkland up to one thousand one hundred and twenty meter square may be provided at eight eighteen Gladstone in accordance with the Parkland Dedication Bylaw.
Thank you, councillor Troster. Did you want to speak to it or?
No, it's just that OCH originally envisioned they might develop some of that land as for-profit housing to, but it's all going to be nonprofit housing. And they're dedicating a smaller man of parkland, but it's actually being combined with an existing park. So there'll be plenty of green in that area. And thank you very much.
All right, is the motion carried? Councillor Bradley has a motion regarding parking at one hundred Constellation Drive for the Summer Solstice Indigenous Festival on suspension of the rules. Is that carried? Councillor Bradley.
Thank you very much, colleagues. As you know, the month of June is Indigenous History Month, a month to celebrate the legacy and current contributions of these communities to learn and to act in support of indigenous communities. So as the council appointed liaison for the Anishnaabi Algonquin Nation Civic Cultural Protocol and Implementation Plan, I am pleased to put forward a small gesture with a large impact in support of a local indigenous community event that celebrates Indigenous History Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day, as well as the Summer Solstice, which is celebrated by indigenous peoples. The Summer Solstice Indigenous Festival organized by Indigenous Experience at Meadowa Kay Farm is an important event that brings together indigenous and non-indigenous peoples together in celebration every year. City staff, including our general manager Clara, will attend the event both as participants and to host booths with city information. This year, the festival is seeking the city's support to allow event participants to park at one hundred Constellation Drive and be shuttled to Meadowa Kay Farm on Hunt Club Road. City staff have received appropriate permissions for this to occur. However, traffic and parking by law twenty seventeen dash three oh one prohibits parking at city facilities unless using the the facility for its intended purpose. So the motion I'm putting forward today is to suspend this bylaw for the weekend of June twenty fourth and twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, to enable the Summer Solstice Festival to allow participants to park at one hundred Constellation and to be shuttled to and from the event. And this motion is seconded by councillor Johnson, where both the farm and the and one hundred Constellation is in College Ward. So I'll just read that therefore be it resolved as my comments pretty much summarized the whereas clause. So therefore be it resolved that city council waived traffic and parking by law twenty seventeen dash three oh one to allow parking at one hundred Constellation Drive for the Summer Solstice Indigenous Festival on June twenty fourth and June twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three in recognition of National Indigenous Peoples' Day and Indigenous History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradley. Is the motion carried? Councillor Conseilant has a motion regarding demolition control for two one four Somerset Street East on suspension of the rules. Is that carried?
Carried.
Conseilant.
Well, it's fine, Karen. Thank you. Do you want me to read it?
Well, we just carried suspension of the rule, so now we have to vote on the motion.
I'll just read the last two parts. Whereas OCHC intends to proceed with the redevelopment of the property in the near future, therefore be it resolved that, given the unique circumstances, council waive demolition control approval and allow OCHC to proceed directly to demolition of two one four Somerset Street East, making the site safe for the public. And thank you again to councillor King for seconding.
All right, is the motion carried? Thank you. Notices of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting, councillor Troster.
Whereas the city is undertaking a combined sewer and water main project on McLaren Street and Lion Street. And whereas some of the driveways within the project limits are not in full conformance with the city's zoning bylaw and private approach bylaw. And whereas many of these driveways, private approaches have been in existence for decades. And whereas there have been no complaints with respect to non-compliant driveways, private approaches or front yard parking in this area. And whereas staff are working on a policy to address front yard parking and reinstate driveways that have existed since September first, two thousand and seven. And whereas that policy is not yet in place, therefore be it resolved that council approve that in respect of the reconstruction of McLaren and Lion Street, the private approaches leading to parking on private property be reinstated as they were on September first, two thousand and seven.
Thank you, councillor Troster. Councillor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank my secondaire, the chair of the Transportation Committee, councillor Tierney. Whereas Nesbit Street is a public right of way that provides access to the Ottawa River. And whereas the owners of two Nesbit have been in discussions with city staff for an extended period of time with respect to a rock wall and other landscaping features within the public right of way, certain of which features have been present in the right of way for approximately twenty years. Whereas to permit the continued presence of the landscaping features, an encroachment agreement is to be required to be executed by the owners of two Nesbit Street. Whereas while the rock wall and other landscaping features do not impede access to the Ottawa River, the neighbouring community has expressed concern. Whereas pursuant to the encroachment of city roads by law, the general manager planning real estate and economic development or the general manager authorized representative has delegated authority to provide terms and execution of the encroachment agreement in accordance with the bylaw. And whereas, given the importance of the river accesses, it's important that this encroachment in any terms of the encroachment agreement to be subject to the review of the Transportation Committee and council. Therefore, be it resolved that the report of Therefore, be it resolved that the report of the encroachment of Nesbit Street adjacent to two Nesbit be submitted to the Planning, Real Estate and Economic Development Department to Transportation Committee and Council prior to the end of September twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Menard?
Thanks very much, Mayor. Whereas the city supported in principle three hundred and thirty two million dollars in new spending for the Landsdowne two point O proposal last term of council without consulting the public. Whereas the city is now consulting on Landsdowne two point O, but is hindered by decisions from last term, which were described then as only a check in. Whereas real time inflation data, proper consultation, affordable housing and other design options for the site are desirable for the public council and staff decision making, which may affect the model proposed in the last term of council. Whereas council should ensure that good faith consultation, respect for taxpayers and good urban design are made a priority for this new term of council. Whereas staff will be presenting multiple options for the Landsdowne two point O financial model to Finance and Corporate Services Committee in the months ahead. Whereas revisions to the plan based on public consultation feedback received to date should be incorporated. Therefore, be resolved that an interim update be provided to the public with regard to the Landsdowne two point O consultations to date. That would include any proposed staff changes to the original Landsdowne two point O plan and communicated well in advance of the staff report that will rise to Finance and Corporate Services Committee. Be it further resolved that the forthcoming Landsdowne two point O reports and applications detail how public input received to date was or was not incorporated through revisions to the proposal.
Thank you, Councillor Menard. Councillor Dudas?
Whereas LRT stage two staff are proposing the construction designs for the Montreal Road, Jean Dar, Convain Glen, Place d'Orléans and Trim stations. Whereas Convain Glen Station has seen multiple designs with varying layouts dating back to at least twenty nineteen, with the current proposed design only being made public earlier this year. Whereas the community residents were not consulted on the current proposed design or given the opportunity to provide feedback. Whereas after sharing the Convain Glen Station design over social media, in addition to the hundreds of online comments, over a one hundred residents reached out with personal emails to the ward councillor expressing their opposition. Whereas the Orleans Boulevard Overpass Bridge is narrower than any other highway one seventy four overpass bridge in Ottawa's east end. Whereas the proposed Convain Glen Station design produces between eight to ten pedestrian conflict zones as pedestrians are required to cross multiple transportation lanes. Whereas the crowding of infrastructure and conflict conflict zones on the bridge is further exacerbated by the proposed design placing the bus stops directly in front of the station at the top of the bridge. Whereas the proposed design includes both a northbound and southbound pickup drop off bay just off the bridge, only fifty meters from the bridge center, where the surrounding land is wider, allowing for less congested infrastructure. Whereas both Herdman and Blair Stations have bus stops located at over a hundred meters from the station doors. Whereas preparing layout designs, making use of base for bus stops would require council's authorization. Whereas the proposed designs bus stop locations require passengers to get on and off buses directly into and from unidirectional cycling lanes on both the east and west side of the bridge. Whereas previous designs utilized a bidirectional MUP layout, combining and eliminating four of pedestrian conflict zones found in the current design. Whereas the existing design plans do not take into any account for the seasonal Christmas attraction that is Taffey Lane, a forty plus year old free event that lasts the majority of December and into January, raising over fifteen thousand dollars for local charities and sees thousands of visitors travel over the Orleans Boulevard Overpass Bridge. Whereas the existing four lane layout already sees vehicles fully queuing over the bridge in the outside northbound lanes as vehicles wait to make a right hand turn to Taffey Lane immediately after the bridge. Whereas as part of LRT construction at the bridge, staff seeking only a sidewalk closure, not even a vehicular lane closure originally scheduled for December fifth, twenty twenty two, were required to postpone to January twenty twenty three due to concerns about the traffic resulting from the Taffey Lane Christmas Lights attraction. Whereas the community of Convain Glen, Orleans Wood, with a population of over fifteen thousand people, is bounded by the Ottawa River to the north, the Greenbelt to the west and the highway one seventy four to the south. The community is completely restricted to only three bridges as their only route west or south out of the community. Whereas there are two high schools, Cream Wilson and St. Matt's, directly north of the overpass and Garno High School directly south of the overpass, as well as multiple elementary schools that rely on this bridge as the primary route for tens of thousands of families every single day. Whereas the proposed design sees the existing four lanes of vehicular traffic being reduced to two lanes, with the requirement for vehicular traffic to queue behind OC Transport buses on the bridge during all station, disembarkments. Whereas OC Transport intends for buses to run at eight minute intervals, anticipating thirty plus passengers per bus disembarkment, which will block all vehicular and cycling traffic, including emergency vehicles, for multiple minutes every interval. This stoppage is further extended as passengers cross the PXO after disembarking buses. Whereas the original design, shared with the public and city councillors in twenty nineteen and maintained as the primary option until just this year, was fully supported as a safe, functional space for all users. Whereas the current bridge design does not take into account increased buses using this station or cars flowing over the bridge as a result of future growth in Orleans at the Convain Glen Shopping Mall or Long St. Joseph Boulevard as a result of the recently approved Orleans corridor secondary plan. Therefore, be resolved that staff take into consideration the feedback and consider concerns from the community regarding the current design and return with designs that include the following elements: reducing the number of pedestrian conflict zones, retaining at least two free flowing lanes of traffic resulting in vehicles, including emergency vehicles, not having to queue behind buses. Fully consider the option of the pickup drop off areas for use as possible bus stops at the Convain Glen LRT station. To address infrastructure crowding, consider options such as including cycling infrastructure by way of a multi-use path. Include in the design allowances that would support the exponential vehicular volume increases that occur during the winter from the Taffey Lane Christmas Lights attraction. And be a further resolved that in the event staff cannot address these concerns, the bridge layout be left in its current state as much as possible with only the necessary pedestrian cycling and bus stop areas until an improved design
That's time, I'm sorry.
that addresses the community's concerns is available.
Just have to read it next time, you all know. Five minutes and three seconds. Okay, yeah. Sorry, Laura, could you repeat that, please? Just kidding. Okay. Thank you, Councillor Dudas. Item twenty nine, notice of intent, just noting the intent from Hydro Ottawa Holding Incorporated to hold their annual general meeting of the shareholder at our council meeting on June twenty eighth and the notice of intent from Ottawa Markets Municipal Services Corporation to hold its annual meeting of the member during our council meeting on June twenty eighth. Motion to introduce bylaws once again, Councillor Dudas.
I feel like I need a glass of water first. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws through readings be read and passed.
Is that carried? Okay, confirmation bylaw, Councillor Dudas.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of June fourteenth, twenty twenty three.
Is that carried? Is that carried? Thank you. Any inquiries? Motion to adjourn, Councillor Dudas?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of June fourteenth, twenty twenty three be adjourned.
Is that carried? Thank you, everyone. Good work today. Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Bonjour à tous. My name is Kendra Tilly and I will be your moderator. Je m'appelle Kendra Tilly et je suis réellement une maîtresse disappointante presse. I will now invite each agency in reverse alphabetical order to ask their questions. You may ask one question with a follow up. Par ordre alphabétique, envers, je invite maintenant chaque organisme à poser une question et une question de suivi. When asking your questions, please identify who your question is directed to. And if you are in council chambers, please use the microphone. Lorsque vous posez vos questions, vous pouvez indiquer à qui s'adresse votre question. Et si vous êtes dans la salle du conseil, vous pouvez le faire au micro. We'll now start with Rédric Papin at Radio Canada.
Okay, bonjour à tous. Monsieur Ma, ma première question sera pour vous. My first question is for Mayor Settleff. You're talking about a policy in the byword market. Are you talking about a police station? Are you talking about new units? Are you talking about a physical in something? What is going to be the cause for Ottawa? What will be the cause for the municipality for this initiative? Now, going back to dates, I think you will have to ask the Police Service of Ottawa to have an idea of what they will do with a byword market operations center. And you will have to talk also to community services. This initiative is possible within the next few months. I do not have a specific date for this initiative. I do believe that we can use the actual budget right now of the police services.
What are the costs of the timeline?
What I proposed during the campaign last year and what I've what I've continued to propose is is I think there's a number of different terms you could use, but something like a neighborhood operations center where there would be some community services, where the police would be involved as well. It's not a police station explicitly, but it's a physical space where there would be services available to the public and where the police would be available. And we've been working with the with the Ottawa Police Service and with Chief Stubbs on moving that forward and looking at what the options are. And this was something that would come out of the police budget and would be on the on whatever timetable that they feel is is achievable in the months ahead.
So when you're thinking about the byword market and what's going on actually in the short term, why do you think that we need more security in the market? First of all, it is very important to say that many business people in the byword market are optimistic. They do believe that this year, the situation has improved for them. There's a lot of people circulating within the byword market much more than during the pandemic. I think the situation is evolving for right now. But I understand that there are some news concerning some incident in the byword market. It's worrying. So I do believe that we need agents in the byword market. This will be positive for the resident, the business people, for tourism, for everyone going to the byword market. So I do believe this will be an improvement for the residents. This will improve the situation in the byword market and will be able to attract more visitors.
Less crime, is that what?
Well, I think I think what we're trying to establish is that we're trying to build trust and confidence going forward. And and I think by and large, things have been getting better in the byword market, notwithstanding some of the recent events of violence. I've heard from a number of business owners who are feeling optimistic. They feel like more people are coming to the byword market. They they feel good about that. They're still concerned about about safety for their employees and their customers and obviously the residents and and tourists who are visiting as well. So in order to build that confidence, I think having a physical presence in the byword market is helpful. And there's a lot that we need to do. It doesn't come down to just one thing. Many, many different things we need to do to build confidence in our our community. There are community resource officers who are in the byword market as well. There are many social service agencies that are helping out as well. So there are a lot of different pieces to this. But one of the pieces, I think, to to build confidence is to have more of a physical presence in the market.
Merci. Merci.
Merci. We'll now go to Bruce Deitchman at the Ottawa Citizen.
Hi, my question's for the mayor. In in light of your support of the Ryan Reynolds bid for the Ottawa Senators, what are your thoughts on Michael Anlauer getting the team and how do you think that will affect the city?
I didn't support any specific bid for the senators. I was happy to see whatever outcome there was. I met with all of, I think, all of the major bids for the senators. And I'm delighted to see Michael Anlauer as the successful candidate, pending approval of the NHL's Board of Governors. I'm I'm I was encouraged by the meeting I had with him. I think he's very committed to building a winning hockey team. He's a he's a big hockey fan. He's a hockey person. He's not a he's, I think, he's approaching this with with hockey in mind and and real estate in a new arena if necessary, rather than putting those things first in his in his mind. That's my impression from the conversations I've had. He's got he's got a great reputation. So I'm looking forward to working with him on building a better future for the senators and for our city.
Were there any things about his, your meeting with him that stood out? Particularly like that didn't with the others?
The one thing that stood out with me is that, you know, we sat down and he said, first and foremost, I want to invest in Ottawa and I want to build a better hockey team and win the Stanley Cup. You know, that's that's his goal. I think there were other people who were approaching this and I respect all the bids and all the people who were involved. I think there were other people who were approaching this, looking at it very much as a as a business opportunity with with the potential for a new arena and related real estate development and all of that. And I'm sure that could still be part of Michael Anlauer's plans. But I did notice when the first time we sat down that that what came out of his mouth first was about building a winning hockey team and winning the Stanley Cup for Ottawa. He's really excited about the potential of our city and the potential of our young hockey team to be able to do that. So that stood out to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Nous allons maintenant Charles-Antoine Gagnon à l'Etroit.
Charles-Antoine Gagnon from l'Etroit newspaper. Sometimes I miss things during the council meeting. I have more than two questions. I have two questions and a half, really. First of all, I don't know if a staffer, if who it was, but I think it was a staffer who was saying that that the average is two point one, but this might increase because three bags or three articles will be allowed. So perhaps that could increase the average. Do they understand that correctly? Is that what someone said? Did they actually say that? Well, it's quite possible, but I don't think it's realistic, really. In my house, we typically have only one bag every two weeks. So I don't think people will be throwing out more garbage in the following months, just because you can. I don't think that'll happen. I think that for all Ottawa residents, for the majority of Ottawa residents, nothing will change, really. And for residents who throw out more garbage, well, this is a new limit that they'll have to respect. And I think there'll be an opportunity to launch a campaign to kick off an education campaign for all Ottawa residents to encourage them to throw out less garbage and to focus more on recycling and also the green bin. And that's to reduce the amount of garbage. So my next question, which is linked, of course, three point five million, that's the cost for the city for now the new proposal that's been adopted. It'll, will it cost less? There was the divine proposal that cost so much. I got a bit mixed up in what what cost what. Well, originally with the staff proposal. Well, originally with the staff proposal, three point five million, that was the estimated cost and that was a unique cost for the implementation of the new measures with what the council was adopted. We think it'll be lower than three point one million, but we really haven't had the opportunity to calculate the actual cost and that needs to be, needs to go through the budget process. Second question now, the new byword market authority, how will it go about making things safer in the market over and above police officers? But what will the mandate of the new authority be actually to do that? Answer, well, I think the mandate for the new authority is not just limited to safety. It is more economic development and development in general of the byword markets. Real estate development, et cetera. And I think the responsibility for safety in the byword market resides with the police, ultimately speaking. Thank you.
Question for the mayor on garbage. Just given the staff recommendation, the motions that are going forward and the fact that staff said today that the three container, three item limit isn't going to have the, the impact on reducing the pressure on our landfill as the other motions and recommendations. Do you feel the city backed down from making the right choice or the tough choice that would have had the better impact on our landfill?
I think we made a decision today that is a big step forward from where we are now, which is really no limits at all. Limits that aren't enforced. Going forward, we're going to have a limit of three items, three containers of, of garbage, which is a lot less than what it is right now. I think it's step one in a process. I think all options in the future are still on the table. And I think this is an important, you know, one important part of a more comprehensive plan that we have to embark on regarding multi-residential waste and also what we're going to do eventually to replace the current landfill site. So I think it's a, I think it is a big step forward and I think that's why you saw the majority, the vast majority of council supporting it.
Switching gears to the senators. Where would you like to see the senators play long term? Would you like to see them to move downtown? And do you think that aligns with Michael Anlauer's vision with the team?
I won't speak for Michael Anlauer. I'm looking forward to having that conversation with him. You know, I, I've said a lot of things every step of the way through this process. I think that Canadian Tire Center is perfectly fine. And if the team chooses to continue playing there, that's certainly an option. If it's, if they're not going to continue playing there, we have to make sure that there is an economic driver for Canada that replaces the Canadian Tire Center, that we do something really exciting with that site so that it's not a loss for the west end of the city. In terms of where the senators might move to, I think there are a lot of different options and possibilities. There are a number of different ideas that have been floated. What I've been thinking about most recently is the idea that we're, you know, our downtown is struggling. The board of trade spoke about that last week and I was encouraged by there, by the fact that they were drawing attention to this issue. And if we want to attract more people to downtown Ottawa and if we're facing some challenges because, because federal government workers are not going downtown as often and the federal government might be disposing of some of its buildings in the downtown core, is there an opportunity to put an arena in downtown Ottawa that would attract people and become a new destination in downtown Ottawa? So that's one scenario, but I think it's a scenario worth considering, given that we want to attract more people to downtown Ottawa. If the new owners want to move ahead with the, the agreement they have with the NCC regarding Le Breton Flats, that's an option too. And there are other options out there as well. But I've been thinking more and more about the prospect of downtown because we are trying to think of ways to get more people to come downtown. Yeah, I'm talking about right downtown. I think Le Breton Flats is close to downtown, but it's not right downtown.
Thank you. We'll now go to Zainab Al Madar at City News Ottawa.
Hi. My question is for the mayor. Sorry, I'm really short. So my question is about garbage, kind of reiterating, but how do you think the proposal of the three item limit will make a difference, you know, with the current? Sorry, I'll say that again. The three item limit is different from what is currently implemented in regards to its effect to divert waste. And because some, some people have said like it's still a lot. So how do you think it's going to affect?
Number one, it's a lot less, it's a lot lower limit than what we have now. So that what we have now is effectively a limit of, of six items, but it's not enforced. And a lot of things are being picketted up and taken to landfill. So it's a giant step forward as far as I'm concerned. I think the other important part of this is that this whole conversation has drawn people's attention to the issue again. And I know it's, it's been hotly debated in the community, but I think that's actually healthy, the fact that people are thinking again about the importance of diversion, of diversion from landfill. So we're, we're introducing, we're reintroducing the topic to people. So they realize that there is a cost to sending things to landfill. It doesn't feel like it. When you, when you put something out at the curb and it gets picked up and it gets taken to landfill, it feels like it's free, but it's not free. It costs taxpayers money. So we're drawing people's attention again to the cost. And we're in, we're, there's going to be a lot of education around getting people to use the green bin, the blue bin and the black bin more often. And about how there are limits in place now, the limits will be enforced. And going forward, if the diversion is not happening at the level we need, we may need to take further steps to increase diversion.
Absolutely. And my follow up is, I know you guys mentioned the weight size or the weight of what's going in these containers. Is there a container size that is limited or is that something that's put forth by the city?
Yes, the, the container limits or sizes have not changed. So the current bylaw basically allows for essentially a hundred forty liter container or a maximum of thirty three pounds. So that's basically specified in the current bylaw and that will not change with the implementation.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Elise Gura at CBC Radio.
Slightly less short. All right. My question again is for Mayor Setcliffe and this is about the senators. So the Anlauer team does have some Ottawa business owners who are involved. I wondered what difference do you think that might make for the city?
I think it's great for the city. There, there's a group of local business owners and I've spoken with them fairly regularly throughout this process. I think you know, I don't think it was a showstopper if there weren't local owners, you know, there are lots of successful sports franchises that are owned by one person and that person didn't necessarily grow up in the city where they own the sports team and they can still be committed to the market. So I'm sure Michael Anlauer would have been a terrific owner, even if these partners weren't involved. But I think it does add something to have a group of local business people who know the city intimately, who have lots of connections, who care about our community and have deep roots here. To have them at the table with Michael Anlauer, I mean, I think it just shows how much he cares about Ottawa and is committed to the marketplace that he would, would include them in, in this, in this ownership group because I'm, I'm sure he didn't have to. I think it, I think it increases the connections to the marketplace and it enhances the opportunity here.
Great. And switching gears kind of to a debate that's coming up here about paramedics. I understand that the city staff have, have said that we need to hire many more paramedics that had been hired in previous years. And the province is basically saying, you know, we're going to match dollars, not as city staff had suggested, fully pay for them. How's the city going to manage that?
There's two things going on here and I think it's important to underline that. Number one, we need to hire more paramedics because the city's growing and the needs are growing. So just as we over time hire more staff in other areas and, and hire more resources because we have a growing population, we need more paramedics. The demand is growing as the population grows. So that's one part of it. And as always, when, when we hire more paramedics, we, we split the cost with the provincial government. There's another issue going on though, which is that our paramedics are not being used as effectively and efficiently as they could be because they're spending a lot of time in hospital waiting rooms. That's not because of anything the city of Ottawa is doing. That's because of backlogs at hospitals and hospitals are a provincial jurisdiction. So because of, because of wait times in the healthcare system, we are not able to send our paramedics back out into the community as quickly as we would like. So we need a solution to that and we feel that that solution should be paid for by the provincial government and they have a program that uses offload nurses. There are other programs that use paramedics. There might be other ideas. But whatever those solutions are to reduce the wait times in hospitals, so paramedics can be back out in the community, I think that's a cost that should be borne by the provincial government.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. We'll now go to Kate Porter at CBC Ottawa.
Hi, everybody. I think this is a question both for you, Elaine, and the mayor. I'm wondering why the garbage limit debate got broken out and dealt with months ahead of the full solid waste master plan. I'm just, you know, you heard councillor Luloff describe not knowing the destination you're heading toward. And I'm just wondering, did you sort of foresee that garbage debates in the city just really rile people up? You know, you wanted to deal with it first?
The, so there's a couple of reasons why we brought the current discussion ahead of the, the master plan itself. One is what was presented to council really is we've already had two substantial reports as part of phase one and phase two of this solid waste master plan that's already been presented to council. And there's a couple of drivers right now. One is trying to drive diversion as soon as possible and not necessarily wait for the final outcomes because we know that basically driving diversion is important regardless of where we're going to be going moving forward. The other element is that we have a contract that we have to renew in terms of our collections contracts. And there's, there's stipulated timelines that we need to adhere to. And unfortunately, that does not align with the solid waste master plan right now. So part of it was to have the discussion on the diversion options. And based on council's recommendation, now we're able to embed that as part of that contract, which is going to be coming to council probably in September for decision. The solid waste master plan will be presented probably around October or so. And that's going to be providing a suite of options, but that's going to be dealing more with, okay, now that we know what ways we're dealing with, what are the options in terms of how we're dealing with that waste?
Maybe the second question then is more for you, Mayor Setcliffe. I, I'm just wondering, you know, we might be facing the real prospect of another landfill or an incinerator or something like that. And I'm just wondering how you think the city council will be able to deal with a tough debate or decision on that when on just garbage limits, you know, there was a lot of negotiation that moved to a less strong stance on the issue.
I'm looking forward to that conversation. You know, we, we have to make big, tough decisions as a city council and someday this council will have to make a determination on what will replace the current landfill when it runs out in the future. And that day is coming sooner rather than later because those are big decisions that take a long time to implement. But I think what you saw today, I know not everybody may be happy with the outcome. Maybe that's the sign of a good compromise sometimes, but what you saw today was a very healthy debate and discussion about a very controversial issue that touches residents directly and about which everybody has an opinion. And we reached a consensus at, at city council, a twenty two to two vote about a very difficult topic. So I'm, my, my goal is always to get everybody working together. That's what I heard from residents over and over again during the election campaign last year. They wanted to see council working together. They didn't want to see council fighting with each other. And I think that's a really healthy sign. There was lots of debate and discussion and then we arrived at a conclusion that a vast consensus of council supported. And I think that has to be our goal with, with every decision we make on, on this file.
Just to be clear too, though, seeing those sorts of different options and the timelines or, you know, pros and cons of each should be in the October document?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to double check. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Last but not least, we'll go to Liam Fox at the Canadian Press.
There. So my question for the, is for the mayor. So as I understand it, part of the byword, or byword market district authority's new appointment responsibilities is to, you know, have, have public safety as, as a priority. So I'm wondering what the specific initiatives are that the byword market district authority is implementing and you know what the timeline sorry, would be for them to, to be finished with that.
So I'm not going to be prescriptive about that. I, there's a, there's a new authority that's going to be in place. There's a new board. There'll be, there'll be people working on this. And I think a plan will be developed to, to do a whole bunch of things in the byword market, including that. So you know, there's, this is the beginning of a new chapter in the governance of the byword market and, and I, I think there are lots of options and ideas on the table and we'll see where the discussion goes.
What, what would you like to see be done?
Well, I think I've already spoken about a number of things. So again, first and foremost, I'm encouraged by what I hear from business owners in the byword market that they're feeling better this year than they did last year. They feel like more visitors and tourists are coming to the byword market, that there's more energy there. There have been, of course, very concerning events that have happened in the, in the market recently and we want to reduce those as much as possible and, and public safety has to be paramount for the visitors and for the employees and for the business owners in the byword market and the residents, of course. So there are a lot of different possibilities. I think having community resource officers, having, having police in the market, having other programs in place. There are a lot of different ideas on the table and I'm willing to listen to, to all of them and have a productive conversation about it.
Okay, thanks. And my second question is just, have you scheduled a date to actually meet with the Sens? A new ownership group and, and what are you planning to discuss?
I haven't. So Michael Anlauer and I have exchanged a few messages over the last twenty four hours and I congratulated him and I told him I was looking forward to working with him. I'm sure we'll meet in the, in the coming days and weeks. He's, I'm sure he's got a lot of on his plate right now because this still has to be approved by the NHL's Board of Governors. So I'm looking forward to the conversation about how the senators can flourish in Ottawa. But again, the, the most exciting thing to me is that we just had a bidding war for the Ottawa Senators. You know, there, there were a lot of very successful people from all over North America who wanted to invest in our city and see great potential here. And, and so that's really encouraging. It says a lot about what we've built in this community and about our future. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This concludes today's media availability. Ceci conclue, le point de presse d'aujourd'hui. Thank you. Merci.